All right, welcome everyone and welcome to the June tenth Planning Commission meeting of Scioto Township. And roll call please.
Roll call the Commissioners, April.
Present.
Moore.
Not here.
Coberton.
Present.
Rothling.
Here.
Walsh, here, Hyde. Reiser.
Present.
Okay, next we move to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any proposed changes or revisions to the agenda?
Yes.
Well, it's been thought that do we want to rearrange this and have the public hearings and then the agenda item directly following it, or do we want to take them all the public hearings in order? So that's a, that's a question for the whole table. Wouldn't you save us any time and just perhaps transition? It's probably going to have to stay for the whole thing. Let's.
Moving three to one of these ones. Yeah.
Go ahead and say it.
Yeah, I think we defer to the, the public getting the public comment through.
Okay.
Any, I mean, I'm open to any other suggestions.
Move to adopt the agenda as written, the board.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Reiser to adopt the agenda as posted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving forward, communications and correspondence. Any communications or correspondence? We did receive Commissioner Reiser's report and that will be added to the packet. Right, we have no presentation, so we're going to move along to public comment. And this is people wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion. So that means anything that has to do with the two four two Community Church daycare, the Provenzola zoning the towns of Honey Creek. There'll be a specific public hearing for each one of those agenda issues. So I'm gonna then go ahead and open public comment at seven oh two. And if people will come forward, sign in under the appropriate, we have a whole slew of papers up there, so find the appropriate one for public comment and please sign in. And if we could limit your presentation to three minutes, except if you're a representative over an organized group and it's five minutes. So if anyone would like to address the Planning Commission, we'll do those folks that are in attendance in Township Hall and then we'll move to anyone who is attending online. Hey, anyone want to address the Planning Commission? All right, I'll move to online. Rob Pattinson. All right.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township resident. Is Crossroads a public hearing tonight? I don't think it is, right?
It is not, so this would be the appropriate time to comment on Crossroads.
Great, thank you. In the report in the, in the packet, it talks about the air quality test that they did and it was an inappropriate air quality test they did. They didn't do VOCs or particulate. And it seems to me that until they do the, the right air quality test, there's no point in going forward with that process. And also, I'll remind the Planning Commission that they got off real light on the public benefit aspect of their PUD application in terms of, I think it was eighty thousand dollars towards the tree fund or something. And we have a million and a half dollar fire ladder truck that we need. And it, it, I think it is well past time that we have some significant public benefit from all of the developers. There are some developers who have chipped in a million or two on their projects and I think Crossroads needs, needs to be held to that same standard. And that's all for now, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Then entertain a motion to close public comment. Moved by, and by Commissioner April and supported by Commissioner Walsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Posted at seven oh five. Moving on to approval of minutes. This is our May thirteenth meeting. Do we have any changes or corrections to the minutes? All right, I want to say that Commissioner Moore has arrived. Good, good evening. We are in approval of the minutes.
Moved approved.
Moved by.
Hyde, supported by Reiser.
Supported by Reiser, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as posted. Then we'll move on to our public hearings. All right, so this is the beginning of the series of public hearings. We take one project at a time and we ask the applicant to come forward first. We hear from the applicant a short presentation and then any specific clarifying questions only from the Planning Commission and then go to our, our planners review, engineering review. And then we open it up for public comment for folks here and then also online. So that's basically the agenda of each of the public hearings. Okay, with that, we will declare the public hearing for conditional use number twenty four zero zero four, BSP number twenty four zero zero eight, two four two Community Church daycare. Open, if the applicant would come forward, welcome.
What do you want me to send up here, right here?
Right there is good and there should be a sheet that says two four two on it. And if you could, yeah, sign in, that would be great. And welcome and you can, yeah. Introduce yourself and then do you have anything that you want to project on, on your company?
I think all of the stuff that we have submitted is within, within your hands, so it will be ready to be projected. So I don't know how much details you want me to go into. My name is Albo Esalaba, I'm the campus pastor for two forty two at our location just on South Wagner Road. And before the commission to, tonight is a proposal to provide a conditional use for an additional daycare facility within our existing location. We already have a childcare space and all and so pretty much the interior of the building will remain intact. What has come to us that we need to accommodate for is two specific things. One, just a design around the drop off and pickup with, with a separate entrance to the building and which will provide that in some of the submissions we've given to you as well as an outdoor fenced kids play area that will be safe as part of the ordinances of the township. So we have both of those accommodations in place and really was going to be open to any other additional questions. I don't know, Laura, if there's anything else you want.
Well, I'm happy to give a brief synopsis also. So as Albo said, this is the two four two Community Church, which is already located at six four eight South Wagner Road. This property is zoned I one limited industrial and it is part of the Jackson Road overlay district. In two thousand sixteen, the church was approved a conditional use and so this is an expansion of their facility uses, including a daycare. The daycare is about a hundred and fifty students, that would be the maximum that would be allowed there. They provide care Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM for students ranging in age from six weeks to twelve years. They anticipate that twenty teachers will be present during the peak operations and peak drop off times would be between eight and nine AM and peak pickup hours are between four thirty and five thirty PM. As I mentioned, this is an existing mixed use development where there are several different office and industrial uses within this complex. As Albo said, there are really no exterior improvements to the site with the exception of a small fenced in, thousand square foot fenced in area at the rear of the building where children will be, will play. That is a requirement of our ordinance and it's also a requirement of the state license that they have to obtain for the childcare permit. In discussions with township officials in giving a, we have a development team meeting where I give a brief overview of projects that are upcoming. A concern was raised about the, the, that this is a former, the former Gelman site and any potential contamination that may be in the area where the children may play. And I, I sent an email to Eric and Albo earlier today and Eric was kind enough to supply us with the baseline assessment that was provided when the church took ownership of that site in two thousand sixteen. And in email, he indicated there is ongoing, continual and ongoing monitoring of the site and they've never been informed of any adverse change in the condition of the report since two thousand sixteen. And looking through the report and I, like I said, I just got this late this afternoon, that's why you don't have it in your packet. There is, there is no sign of any soil contamination in this general area of the site. This is where the storm, you know, gen, it's, the play area is near where the stormwater management system was dug up and enlarged for the church facility and there's no report of any contamination in that area. I can share that information and it'll go to the board when this goes to the board as well.
All right, clarification.
Clarification question?
Is the testing related to dioxane testing?
Yes.
And that's the critical.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's a ninety five page report.
But it has dioxane.
It has, yes. It has POCs or VOCs, I'm, I'm sorry, and I mean, a whole host of whole host of organic. So.
So, I mean, I mean, it's going to come up later and I can wait, but they want to put a playground, they want to put a, like a playground on ground zero of the dioxane plume?
Well, a thousand square foot fenced in play area, outdoor store area, play area is required as part of their state permit.
Yeah.
And this, you know, as part of the church, athletic fields were also approved. And there's been no, I mean, it doesn't change.
Like, I know the testing, the testing mechanisms have changed over time and the, you know, the diox, the Gelman settlement was based on the law at the time and testing has gotten more sophisticated and I, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, are we into a deliberation or are we clarifying?
I'm tipping my, I'm tipping my head.
Yeah, let's keep it to clear, yeah, clarifying.
Well, we're, we're, we're talking.
Plenty of time to discuss the issues.
So, so we have a test, but we haven't reviewed it.
No, we've not.
Just a clarifying question, on that document without going down the road, does it say it's a phase one BSA? Does it say phase two at all on the top page of the document?
This is called a site characteris, characterization assessment.
Okay.
For six six zero South Wagner Road, building number three. Prepared for two four two church.
And say who prepared it?
PM Environmental Inc. out of Berkeley, Michigan.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question, I don't know if this is for the commission. I know we did that initial test when we launched our location in two sixteen. We continue to do annual tests on that site. Is that something that the commission would want to have a look at continually or what?
Just clarifying what kind of tests they are? Do you know what type of tests?
I would have to dig into it.
Okay, so you do do some annual testing.
We do and I, I would imagine that anything that comes up from that that is a flag would get to this commission pretty quickly, yeah.
And how would that happen? How and what's the vehicle for providing us, this commission, with results of testing for dioxane in the soil on which this playground is proposed?
So we, obviously, because we are a heavy use facility, we do have kids and students, they have adults there every time. We are personally very interested in making sure that the, every testing is, is up to standard. So if it is something that maybe the commission would want somebody on the road, we may be able to provide that.
Well, I think it's down the road, I think it's gonna be pretty soon, but I can't speak for this commission.
Okay.
All right.
But as the report, as has been mentioned there, says we've not had any incident, nothing of, any of the reports that have come so far have indicated anything that has gone different from the original plan.
Mr. Hyde.
Moore, could you clarify when you said that the testing didn't show up anything negative, does that mean there was no level of dioxane found? Or is there a small level that's under the state standards?
You'd, I'd have to, I've read the executive summary of this report and there to see the findings and without reading them to you. Soil analytical, analytical results do not identify concentrations of VOCs above laboratory method detection limits in soil samples collected.
VOCs.
So, I mean, like I said, I just got this this afternoon. We can provide it to you, you can look it over yourself.
What else?
Okay, that, without having to read ninety five.
And just one more clarifying question on this. One thing you mentioned is it's required by the state license and as well as, obviously, I saw ordinance was last updated in two thousand and seven that we have to have an outdoor play space because it's over five hundred feet from a public park. Other than our ordinance just allow it currently. In theory, for the state license, could this facility be inside of their building?
That I can't answer.
That you don't know, oh, it's okay.
We, we explore that because we do have a play structure, actually a bigger play structure indoors, but to fulfill the ordinances of the state and the requirements of the state, they recommend we have an outdoor one as well and we're happy to comply with that.
Sure.
Commissioner Hyde.
Is there a state standard for the, do we have a standard that we have to have them be for the design of the play area? Okay, so we don't have to review the, the design of it at all?
This is square footage and it is required to be fenced up.
Okay, then, did you have anything else that you?
I have nothing else, yeah, okay.
And anything, I don't think there were, anything from OHM?
Anything, second, nothing new.
All right, then we'll go ahead and invite anyone from, who's attending in the Township Hall that would like to address the Planning Commission on the two four two daycare conditional use. All right, anyone online?
Nobody.
Yes. Hi, Rob Pattinson.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township resident. First of all, I, I want to say that I have absolutely no problem with the two four two church putting together a, a play space and the, the childcare function. My sole concern is that it, as Commissioner Reiser just said, it really is ground zero for dioxane. When the Planning Commission packet came out, the first thing I did was I wrote to Roger Rail and he sent me a bunch of documents showing that this area where the two four two church is, is where Gelman sprayed the lawn with dioxane for ten or fifteen or twenty years before he got caught. And so there is a lot of dioxane in the soil in that exact area because that's where it was sprayed. So I, I think number one, that has to be cleared up with great confidence. I wouldn't trust anything in terms of data that Gelman supplied. This has to be tested by independent labs that have nothing to do with Gelman. And, and also that they use something as sensitive as method five twenty two that we, that Scioto Township used in wells and discovered the dioxane plume was much bigger than, than expected. Down to, I think it was point one two parts per billion instead of seven point five parts per billion, which is the state standard. I think we need to have that kind of data before we expose kids to, to any, any level of dioxane. I'm a little disappointed, Laura, that both in your report and in the OHM report, there was no reference to Gelman or dioxane. You guys are always on top of things and for that to slip through the cracks. I, I wish you would have said something about that in your report and, and covered that aspect of, of the Gelman plume. And remember, and remember that there was eight hundred, well, Gelman reported there was eight hundred and fifty thousand pounds of dioxane, either sprayed on the lawn or pumped into the ground and that's what Gelman reported. It could very well be much greater than eight hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So you're gonna have to really be careful with this one, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Pam Boyd, all right, Pam?
Thank you, Pam Boyd, a Scioto resident. I, I echo some of Rob's concerns. I'm, I'm all for having this type of facility at this church. I, I think more options are needed for children to have alternatives to the regular public schools. I do feel because it's such an issue with the dioxane that there, there needs to be a specific standard that the church tests and having that more sensitive testing for the dioxane, I think would make everybody and the, the parents of the children feel a whole lot better if that's done. And so even if it's postponed until the, the township can convey the type of test needed, I would like to see this eventually passed, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? No.
Just a quick question, the original report was done by PM Environmental Inc., that's the one you received, Laura, right? I'm wondering if they, because I know part of the concern is that any data that was provided by Gelman directly is one that is suspect and, and I don't know if the, the concern is if this is independent from Gelman. This is independent from Gelman, right? I just want to make that clear, that while we know the history with Gelman, this was an independent study that was initiated by us. All right.
All right, then, was there someone that, if you wanted to address the Planning Commission, please come up and sign in?
Oh, sure, I will. I will just say, I am, I'm sure that the Planning Commission is aware, but I am Cassandra Provenzola, millennial builder, I'm very familiar with PM. I'm not sure if everybody on the Planning Commission is, but in that regard, before they do a report, they do a complete historical walkthrough of the property to dive into all of those agents, so I just wanted to let that be known. There first is that initial report that he has, but then obviously phase one and phase two. But history wise, PM will have done that due diligence, so I will just make that comment only because I'm here. And now I have to figure out where to sign.
Who are you?
Cassandra Provenzola, I'm on the agenda for something else, but very familiar with PM. Yep.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay. Supported by people? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and yeah, we'll take this up under new business then. Okay, next we're going, I'm going to open the public hearing for OA number two four zero zero three, Provenzola rezoning OS to A one.
Yeah, welcome.
Hello. That was really hard to find. Okay, I'm right here next to it, so that was, that's a little bit easier.
Hello, I am Cassandra Provenzola. My motion, for lack of a better word, is to rezone a property located, located at six eight six nine Marshall from OS office space to, I think, A one residential or ag with a residential use. I think that it's pretty simple, but I may be undershooting that just a bit, so please let me know if I am. It is a vacant property that's been vacant for some time, built partially, so we would be assuming the structure, obviously applying, applying for new permitting and then rebuilding that, that structure from the interior perspective, not on the exterior perspective. And then our intent is to actually physically live there as residents and then we would have a home business. This is not our main location or a public location just for receivables essentially and my, my own personal office, so that is the plan. Yeah.
So I would just add that this is a fifteen point one acre parcel, as Cassandra mentioned. It is the only office service zoned parcel in this vicinity. The master plan does call for this particular parcel to be recreation conservation. So A one or recreation conservation are the appropriate zoning classifications for her use. And I would just mention that the home base business is not part of this rezoning approval that is done administratively through, through the zoning compliance application process, which has not happened yet, it would happen after the rezoning and she would be required to meet all the standards of the home occupation ordinance such as, you know, only a certain number of employees that, I, I think no employees that live outside the home. And then, you know, it can't look like a business in any way she would perform. So I'm happy to answer other questions when we get to new business as well.
So I have a question of clarification, so how would we know? Those of us that might be voting on this project today, if whether or not it meets thirty six dash one hundredths of the people in them? Do not, does not create a nuisance or endanger the health and safety and welfare and enjoyment of any other person in the area?
Because it's not part of, that's not part of what you're deciding tonight.
Well, I understand that and I understood your comment about it, but if I'm gonna vote on approving it, then I've gotta trust because you're the person, the administrator that's gonna.
But you're voting on the rezoning of the property to a residence.
Right, and so what I'm saying to you is that you're, I, I want to ask this question of her. Yeah, you would be the administrator making that decision about whether or not it's unsanitary, unsightly conditions, fire hazard or endangered to the health and safety, is that correct? That would be your administrative role?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't have that information because she hasn't filled out a zoning compliance for home, home occupation yet. So I can't make any determination or future consideration on that because I don't know all of the aspects of it.
But when we decide today, tonight, should we do that? We're gonna be deciding the rezoning from OS to A one.
Yep.
With a component of home.
No, you're just.
Occupation.
No. That, that information was just provided because Cassandra indicated to me as, when, when she occupies this new residential structure, she intends to have a home occupation there. It was just meant for transparency. It's not meant for any consideration on that, on this tonight. It was just meant for transparency. It's not meant for um any consideration on that on this tonight. Any um residential structure can house a home occupation. All they need to do is come and ask for um a a zoning compliance permit and they they provide a narrative and um additional information sometimes if I don't get enough information. And I ensure that it meets section thirty-six dash one hundred of the zoning ordinance, which which provides all the requirements for home occupation, and then it's an administrative approval. So this really, th- that information was meant to be transparent in in Ms. Provenzola's um intent with the property so that if any of the neighbors came and were concerned, um, we know upfront that she intends to to use it not only as a residence, but as a home office.
I appreciate the the context being delivered by the planning commission. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question about what you meant by receivables, or should I wait to ask that later? Is that you mean like a count receivable, or do you mean like deliveries receivable?
I mean deliveries.
Yep, so I own um proven kitchen and bath studio in Dexter, just to kind of tell the board all of the ins and outs of this. Um, I already have a location in Dexter. So I have offices in Dexter. I have a showroom in Dexter. I need my clients in Dexter. This will be our main property, but we will be getting um my intent with speaking um uh with zoning and and kind of doing this due diligence was just to make sure that I was being transparent and Laura and I talked, we wanted to make sure that I put on there exactly what we were going to intend to do with the property. So FedEx trucks, U P S trucks. We do get cabinet deliveries. Um, we don't deal in anything hazardous, um i.e. any type of combustible, gasoline, anything. I mean, we are truly getting cabinets and plumbing fixture deliveries are the bulk of what we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure it's known. I my children will be living there, so it's definitely not going to be an unsafe environment.
Now is the time to ask whether any bathtubs, toilets, cabinets, et cetera, is it when the context of a home occupation or whether that's in the commercial vein? So I I don't know if we do this now or later, but I'm gonna ask at the appropriate time.
Yeah, and and maybe that gives Laura a little bit of time to
I you know, you know, any business gets deliveries, right? And even my home, at my home, I have five people there that order things and Amazon truck may come two or three times a day because I live, I live between the Toledo and Detroit market. So I mean, I don't, I don't know. That's my answer.
We'll, we'll continue that later. All right, and I don't think there were any other um pertinent reports.
Uh, yes. So two clarifying questions. Um, obviously, this is the rezoning application. Will the site plan still come before us, or is that
There will be no site.
There's no site plan because it's a house, okay.
And as I understand um from uh Laura's memo, you're gonna be using the existing building, just gonna be remodeling interior to make it more home.
Yep.
And we'll ask this now since this is all the same thing, where I was going with it. Your intention is not to split the site, at least at this point. We can't hold you to it because it's just
It was interesting to know that it, I mean, that, no, we're not gonna split it. We're absolutely in love with the fifteen acres.
Awesome.
Yeah.
There's some discussion that I'll have later.
Yeah, all right. Um, all right, any more clarifying questions? Okay, then we'll open up to um the public. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to address the planning commission on uh the public hearing for the rezoning? Please come forward. And uh if you would sign in and yeah, and introduce yourself, thank you.
Sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Jimmy Adams, seven oh one five Marshall. I'm the next door neighbor to said property. Um, our east north-south um lot line runs the length of their property. Um, so we have no problem with this. We've been there eighteen years. Um, for the first four or five, the old building was vacant. And then the owners, current owners bought it, um moved their engineering firm into that rambling structure and they were there till the entire structure burned down one end of the other slowly. And uh then their insurance company dawdled along and waited to give them not quite enough money to rebuild, to reoccupy, but enough to get the shell up. It's been vacant ever since next door to us. We would welcome anyone to be there because it's not, it's just not right to have a vacant large structure. Um, it's gonna be a very large house. To say the least, but it's a gorgeous piece of property front to back and uh we welcome the new neighbors.
Oh, thank you. Thanks to meet you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the planning commission on this rezoning? All right, we'll move online.
Uh, yes, Pam Boyd.
Oops, Pam Boyd, a SiO resident.
Come back if there's someone else. Okay.
I can't, I can't tell you how many times I have driven by that property over the last multiple years and asked my husband who's in real estate, can't you find somebody to buy this and turn it into a home? So I am so pleased to see that property get um an owner who who wants to turn it into a home. So I I hope that you do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
No.
Is there someone else here that would like to address the planning?
Do you sign somewhere?
Yeah. Sorry.
So I'm Eric DeKemter and I um, me and Mike Levine own, Mike Levine and I own the farm um on Marshall Road down the street and my in-laws um who are here also live the of the property across the street. And we are also excited to have somebody actually living in that building and have it not be, it's kind of a, you know, an eyesore for a while. Um, but I guess the only question I have is, do you plan to do any agriculture there? And if so, what agriculture? Um, that is my only question.
The only thing that we would do is plant, and so we are actually looking for somebody that can help us with native plants. We want to do like a native landscape and just make it really beautiful. So if you see our house in downtown Dexter that we redid, um, we redid, my husband and I and our kids redid the yard ourselves there. So that is the extent of my knowledge in agriculture. So we are definitely seeking out somebody who would bring in native plants for us and we're not gonna go crazy with overplanting, but no, no agricultural like business, I guess, is the bottom line. Our business is strictly um you know, renovation products essentially. Yeah. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the planning commission? Right? No one else online?
No.
All right, seeing none of entertainment. Move to close the public hearing by Riser and supported by Walsh. Hey, uh, any further discussion?
I have a quick clarifying question though for you too. Um, and Laura um has gone through this with me, so this is no of her, but probably just for me and my um agents here too. When does this get voted on and then like firmly decided?
A process question.
Okay.
So they have decided to go through the agenda as it was written. So we're gonna go through the next public hearing and then we're gonna go back to two four two church and start at new business. Okay, so we'll talk about the the daycare first, then you, so you can wait through one more public hearing and then we'll do the new business.
Oh, sure.
It's it's to their um discretion how if they want to modify the agenda that goes not to this evening. So
Okay, okay.
But then it goes to B O T.
And then we'll go to the B O T, yes, after here.
Which will take
The board of trustees have the final say.
Yeah.
Do you have a meeting tomorrow night, but
No, it's not tomorrow night.
Uh, it would, it would, it would be, it would be at a future meeting.
Okay, like a month possible out kind of situation. Okay, that was all I was curious about. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, we'll vote on our motion um to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we are closed at seven I'm trying to do Apple time.
Seven thirty-eight.
Seven thirty-eight, thank you. All right. Um, all right, then I'm moving on to our third public hearing. And just so you know, we've had some very short meetings, so we're paying for it tonight. Typically, uh, we don't do three, but we're, we're doing three. Okay, so this is for conditional use number two four zero zero three P S P number twenty-four zero seven towns of Honey Creek New Residential. That um will welcome the applicant, if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Sign in.
And sign in and it's seven thirty-nine.
Uh, I'll sign in right after. So um commissioners, thank you. Um, we're here to present the towns of Cherry Creek. Um, pleased to be here on behalf of the applicant at my homes. Um, we'll keep it pretty brief so people don't have to wait through this and a lot of the context is in the the letter from from Laura, but we're certainly here to answer any questions. Uh, I have David Straub here with at my homes with me as well as uh Kyler Sheeran with Atwell, um, the engineer on the project. So we're here to answer any questions and I don't know, Laura, if you can promote me maybe or how long?
No, I have to do it. Yeah, who, what are you?
Sorry, Matthew Bush.
Matthew Bush.
Well, Honey Creek, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, oh, you can
The owner.
And then allow them
You're cheering for
Yeah, Bush, yes. And then you just go to uh actually go to the free dots. And um which panelists, there you go, you got it.
Much appreciated. Here, let's take a second. It says three joining me, so there we go. All right, so towns of Honey Creek, we're here um for a conditional land use uh permit application. Um, again, a lot of the context is in the the planning review letters. I think most of you uh probably reviewed the packets and that, but just for those who uh just giving a brief overview for you here, our subject property is actually one of the outlots for the Menards property located in the south side of Jackson Road, just used to stable the road there. Uh, the property is zoned C two general business and uh we're in the Jackson Road overlay district. Uh, drilling down into the site from Menards property, just to give you context on where the um one of the outlots that we're looking to develop here is on the east side of the Menards property. Uh, you can kind of see that yellow outline is is what we'll be proposing, uh, I'll call the development area. Um, eleven acres there and um I see the overlay, which what we're proposing here is sixty high-quality residential townhomes. Uh, because this is the Jackson Road overlay district, um, it allows for mixed-use projects and uh townhomes are actually more appropriately multi-family residential is a uh is a conditional land use. Of course, it's a discretionary approval, but it's a conditional land use uh under the C two zoning. Um, our plan will have to meet the multi-family design criteria in the ordinance. And um, but we feel like this is a good use of the land. Um, it as as stated in the letter and we agree with uh or the planning review letter that this would be a good transitional use from the predominantly industrial to the north and we have uh the single-family residential to the south of us. Um, just to note as well, there's a large natural buffer between our townhome property and the single family to the south just by means the Honey Creek and staying out of the flood plain and the trees there. So um we we feel this is a good uh transitional um planning buffer. Uh, again, this is the first step in the process, so this is the conditional land use. Um, see if this or you guys agree this is an appropriate use of the land. We'll be submitting a formal site plan as a next step. Um, where we'll go through many more details. Standard detail, standard approval stuff, but just to give you kind of just a a broad stroke of the conceptual site plan. Um, townhomes, we have infiltration basins. We've done some soil testing to try and infiltrate as much water as possible. Uh, met with the uh, you know, the drain officer, the water resources commissioner, um preliminarily. Um, we haven't submitted site plans yet, so those reviews haven't started. And uh just wanted to bring to light the almost four hundred foot buffer uh from building to building that's uh through that national natural, natural buffer from Honey Creek. So uh just a real quick snapshot, more details to come pending this moves forward. Um, and finally, again, in the the smittle documents, there was multiple views. We just wanted to make sure you can see it on the screen, but here's the front elevation. Um, we feel like it's a high-quality um interesting uh architecture. It's a two-story um not too obtrusive in our um humble opinion. So this is just a snapshot of a front elevation. Uh, conceptual, of course, but uh snapshot of what we'll be looking to do uh for the townhomes on the property. And with that, um, that's our brief overview. We're certainly here to answer any questions after the public hearing or during the public hearing you may have. And um, that's our presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, clarifying questions from the
Uh, couple of clarifying questions. Uh, obviously, you have a lot area to the south, the north, are you planning a lot of landscape buffering because of the mix of the commercial and the housing use?
To the, to the north there, let me see if I can back. So so to the north there, we are providing for uh the required setback, so it's thirty-five feet setback there. Um, we do have to run a, well, we believe we have to run a water line through there as well, but we will be planting a row of trees. It just won't be all that whole thirty-five foot buffer, so we'll do what we can.
There's two other quick clarifying questions and I'll probably get yelled at, that's okay. Uh, are these planned for purchase rental? I mean, we can't hold you to that at this point, but just out of curiosity.
The intent, they're, they're for sale. They're
Um, and then one last question that will certainly come back to this. Is there a sidewalk in this at all?
Uh, there is not plan for a sidewalk at this time. Um, there's no sidewalk throughout the Menards, so.
We can go back to that later.
Yeah, I mean, I've got sidewalks and playgrounds on my list of non-clarifying questions.
Okay.
Yes, some, some um recommendations will be forthcoming. All right, any other uh clarifying?
It's a structural site plan. It's not a site plan.
All right, okay, then um Laura, did you want to go for your?
Sure, um, so I just want, I guess, a couple of just things to add. I didn't hear that the density would be about five point four units per acre, which is what is proposed. And then the um, the attached residential are three, four, five, and six unit buildings throughout that um area. The master plan does call for this area to be mixed-use commercial, which does allow for high-density residential as a component of mixed-use. Um, it is part of the Menards development, so we would see this as as part of that mixed-use area. Um, I think that's really all I had at this point.
Thank you for pointing that out. I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, and then um I, there wasn't, did O H M want to say anything? Stacy's here. Stacy, did you want to, would you um promote Stacy to panelist so it's easier for them? Stacy, did you want to have, did you have any other comments?
I actually don't have any comments in our conditional use letter. Uh, we anticipate it being compatible with the infrastructure, so we recommended approval in our letter from May second. So I'd be be happy to answer any engineering questions if needed.
I think I have a clarifying question.
A clarifying question?
Let me know if I don't. Stacy, the the sixty units, have you looked at the R E units that will be required?
Yeah, we have not looked at those yet. Um, I don't know exactly how many would be required for this development, but it wouldn't be more than what we have left. So I am not concerned about that at this point, and that's typically something that comes in site plan and detailed engineering.
So more than we have left for all of SiO Township or more than we have left for this uh this Menards parcel? What do you mean by that?
It's significantly less than what we have left. Sorry, overall.
Yes.
In SiO Township.
And that's, and that's coupled with what Menards uses.
I would have to go back and check if Menards I would have to go back and check if Menards had any REUs um requested for the outlots typically with large developments like that, they don't always put aside any REUs for the outlots because they don't know what's going to come and be developed there. And that could be out. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, could you do that and let us know?
Yeah, of course.
Because it's, correct me if I'm wrong, is I understand how the REUs goes. Each property that sort of bought into it along Jackson Road got so many REUs. And there's some people that didn't buy into it. But the reason I'm asking, okay, and the reason I'm asking that question is because if if this property, which includes the new town, what would includes the new townhouses? If you're all, if they're already at their limit of REUs, does that implicate them paying extra money for REUs? Or the townhouses paying extra money for REUs?
The REUs aren't actually paid for. They're just allotted by the Board of Trustees per lots that apply for them or request them, I should say.
Well, what, okay, well, uh so if you have a certain amount, everybody doesn't have unlimited REUs, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you've met your allotted REUs, what is the process for getting additional REUs? Once we determine or if we determine that they'll just, we'll stay on this project, that this project would be above their allotted REUs?
Yeah, so my best guess is Menards either has no REUs for their outlots or they have some that this is likely higher than that. I would have to check on if Menards did that or not, and I will do that as part of site plan. If it turns out that this development has more REUs needed than what Menards um earmarked for them, they would just simply request additional REUs from the board.
So are you recommending that we approve? I know your, I think your memo says that you approve recommend, you recommend that we approve this project. You're recommending that we approve this project without knowing the REU questions?
I do with the conditional use, yes.
This is just the conditional land use. Now.
Well, I guess I don't understand what that means. This is just.
Can they use this for townhouses?
Right now, it's general commercial, so if they came in with a general commercial use, like if they want to build another Menards there.
So we would, we would approve tonight's general use, conditional use, and then worry about REUs tomorrow. Okay, I get it.
Wow, we get our chance.
That's the process that I did not put together. But I I will buy.
Just noted that, yeah, we don't know about the REUs and they've been put on notice that that's a good thing to investigate. Right?
And will this project come back to us with a site plan?
Yeah.
So I'm going to be looking in your future memo about answering those questions. Is that what you just said, that you would address that in the site during the site plan? Stacy?
Yes.
Okay.
Typically, we finalize REUs as part of the detailed engineering review. Uh but with this one, I can make a note to try to pursue that early on in the process to provide that information to you guys since it's residential.
Thank you.
I'm gonna tell, I was gonna talk about REUs because we're talking about crossroads with needs REUs. We've got the Alpha House, which is, you know, thirty six individual families potentially REUs. We've got Goodrich Theater, which could be residential REUs. We've got the location, I want to say Honey Creek Business Park on on Zeeb in Jackson Road, which could potentially be REU dependent. And 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 we've got this dense development. Obviously, I mean, I think the Scioto Township needs more housing and we need housing where we have sewers and we need some housing that people can afford. Uh so but at some point, it's, we got to knock on the door of our neighbor to the east and say, hey, we need more REUs. But but you know, the.
Instead of waiting around to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So.
I definitely see you want to take that up.
Yeah, I I would support that.
But I think part of the problem is is that, and I apologize, but is that nobody's, I feel I'm wondering if anybody's paying attention to this.
I but I think we are.
Ahead of the game.
Well.
Because negotiating the contract is not something you do in two days.
But Stacy has, uh Mr. Morgan, Stacy has apprised us and Matt have apprised us of what our RE, our REUs are.
When you say us, you mean the Board of Trustees?
No, this commission, this commission too, this commission and and the board. And and you know, it's almost like we need like a, like a thermometer on the website of our use or some kind of to know what we've allocated or like it be part of the report uh allocated uh available.
Yeah. Okay, great. I like the. Mother thing.
But you all agree.
Right. All right. Any other clarifying questions? We're good with those. All right, then we'll open it up to um uh folks that are here in attendance who would like to comment on this conditional use.
I would.
Welcome.
When it comes to RE, I distinctly remember uh that O H M has replied that we are at about twelve hundred inventory. So you also have um crossroads on the docket, so you could get to a fairly close estimate of how soon they will be depleted.
Please do sign in. Thank you. Is anyone else present? Who would like to address the planning commission on the townhomes at Honey Creek? Right? We'll move online. Jonathan? Jonathan?
Hey, everybody. How you doing? Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, good. So uh I do want to draw a little attention to the kind of what I consider conditional and sometimes strict and sometimes cavalier attitude towards REUs and township. Um and personally concerned because our planners have been in different directions depending on the uh the development. I don't like the oh, we'll be fine, we'll figure it out later attitude here. We have a limited number of REUs left. And um they were, I like the idea of the understanding the metrics of our business and having a thermometer on a website would just be even better. But for now, until we know what we're doing, I would like to see a little more caution by you all in respect to doling out or planning future REUs. Also, I'd like to say that this looks like a good use of the land and I uh don't uh don't oppose it, but uh sixty uh is that within the the limits? I think I heard you say that, but it seems like pretty pretty cramped for that space back there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? No. What?
Could somebody answer my question? I'm sorry, I just wanted you to answer the question if you could. Is is that density of sixty townhouses like that suitable for that kind of zoning? Or is it being resolved?
Yeah, it's eleven acres of land. It's five point four units per acre. And the most dense development we would allow is ten units per acre. So it's actually mid density is what we would call it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? No, all right.
But to to be clear, the the density and the number of units and all that is preliminary for tonight's discussion. But it's not part of the discussion tonight.
It it's an indicator of what could be developed.
We'll be coming in front of us. We should comment on it, but we're not voting on that.
On that particular.
Just want to see the audience, the public to be aware.
Yes.
We're not voting on sixty units per.
Correct. Correct. We're just voting on the conditional use.
Not the design.
Yeah. For uh multi-family, actually. Okay.
Helpful. Thank you. Bye bye.
Uh I'll enter, thank you. I'll entertain um a motion to. Okay, Welsh and Riser, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh closed at seven fifty eight.
Awesome.
All right. Then we have uh no unfinished business, so we're on to new business and um so this is possible action, the um conditional use of the two four two community church daycare. Okay. So um I I.
To invite the.
You're welcome to come back up if there are some questions. Yes, we can direct them then. So first of all, I I just want to direct our discussion. Does anyone have issues with it as a use separate from the testing? Yes. Okay, so the the big issue is the testing.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Well, there was one.
Yes.
Of the U's and that had to do with the drop off queue. Has that been answered satisfactorily?
No, we should talk about the drop off.
Yeah, that's a design.
So the, so for those in the audience, I did not talk about this um during public comment, but the 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 way that that the church has demonstrated the drop off, it would um basically impede several parking spaces right in front of the door. And so my question to the church and the daycare was, would would they be um limiting parking access during pickup and drop off times for those for those parking spaces?
Yes, we will be limiting and redirecting it. We do have ample parking spaces in the entire parking lot, so it will geoparize the use of that space. And what you do during the operations of the daycare would put out cones and stuff like that and direct traffic flow so that there is no no one is blocked in at any point. So we have a lot of capacity to do that and we do have to spare as well.
All right, any other operational questions? So then we're 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 down to the testing. Um and yeah, go ahead.
So um I just wanted to note that um Alvo talked about how they have a large indoor recreation facility. And I wonder, I don't know if the state um requires the outdoor space or because you have this existing indoor facility, that's something that they may determine is adequate. Um so before we get into a huge conversation about soil and testing, Alvo, you might want to go to the state licensing department and say, hey, I mean, I would be honest and say, you know, this is, this is where we're at. Is it, is it feasible to just use our indoor space?
And we, with the reason we chose to provide the outdoor is because we knew the state required it. Um and it might be a concession they could provide. I want to say we've not explored it because at this point we wanted to come in and say, hey, we want to try and fulfill every requirement that the state is offering us because um if that's the only thing between us and getting this daycare working, we can make it happen. And we see the value of children being able to play outside. We really do see that.
So I think this is kind of like a two track, right? I think I think we'd like to see the annual testing, right? So if if we do continue to move forward with the outdoor portion, we have some um newer data about the the annual tests that are are happening on the site. And then secondly, um whether or not the state would allow them.
Yeah, I think. So I'm feeling a little managed right now. I was one, okay. Okay, go ahead. I I was wondering, I, one of the things, we do have a consultant um that we could have review the test results and make recommendations for any further testing that he felt
Sure.
Uh would would be important for this particular site. And it might be, you know, within that outdoor um proposed area. I mean, that that to me, I don't think we have anyone qualified to look at the test results and or determine. So it be quantum, it's the our.
Okay.
Um. Our same consultant.
This body doesn't even have the test results.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we have, yes, we have a.
Wow, we, that's a pronoun.
Yes. Right. You don't have.
Yeah, so um.
It's in hand, but not our hands.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't have it. We don't know are they testing for or are they testing for worms in the soil or are they testing for dioxin in the soil? VOC in the soil and what what testing mechanism? I mean, this is, can you see the headline? Scioto Township approves playground on original location of dioxin, you know? Uh uh we just got to be very circumspect about allowing kids to play in the dirt where they sprayed dioxin for decades, I think. I mean, so.
I I agree.
And I know that's part before the horse, but it's a really important part with these kids, but I don't know.
Well, I, but I think just having us review the report isn't going to do any good. We need, we need someone who, well, yes, we would, we would review the report, but we need to have someone who is qualified. And if our consultant is not qualified with soils because they do water testing, um maybe they can recommend someone who is, but that would be a good place to start.
I'm going to see if I understand where we're going with the conversation. Um we're saying that uh following the original testing, which um as was presented, said this space was clear. Uh it sounds like the commission is recommending additional or more recent tests. Or is that what I'm hearing or?
I think we want the annual tests that you've done, so we have some additional testing, but then we want someone to review that testing so we know what the standard was and if there's any additional recommendation. The the reason why we're a little gun shy is because of the changing standards, obviously, around the water testing. And I have the EPA look at it. They're involved in our multi litigation. I believe they decided to take on the Gilmann.
Not yet.
Popularity for me, I know you recommended that they, you might have a consultant who's able to look at the current one. Is it what you're looking at or are we saying current one?
And your annual ones.
All annual.
Yeah, if you have, I I guess it'd be the most. Yeah. What whatever you've, whatever you've got, it would be helpful to review, I think. Yes. So um I would not be voting for this project, not because I don't, I'm personally fine with the church having daycare. But this environmental issue is um an important one and um today I get a little summary. I haven't seen any document. Um and quite frankly, I have no experience as a chemist. Or I so or or any other uh science in that regard. Um but I do think that it merits, uh as Kushner Riser said, it merits some careful attention. And so I would not be, if we were taking a vote today, I would not be voting on the project, not because everything is the church or the daycare.
I'm gonna show you.
And I would, I would ultimately agree with almost all the points that Mr. Morgan said. I think the use makes a lot of sense. The idea of what you want to do is great. I think there needs to be more daycare. There's a huge demand in this area. One of the things the commission didn't talk about, and I reached out to Roger Rail, who's been involved in something called card and the whole Gilmann issue for fifty years. Um he provided me a map of approximately many areas around your property that Gilmann sprayed not only dioxin but unknown other chemicals. I just have a lot of concerns about children and chemicals. Um I if we could move it inside, I think I I would be much more in favor of it. I mean, I totally get the whole having kids outside things, great. If this site wasn't having any of the environmental stuff, the other two of the time happens. You know, we've been testing for passing, but Gilmann was spraying, who knows what else? We don't know what we don't know.
And Gilmann has left this mess for us. You know.
And unfairly for you, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, we've, based on our initial uh report, we felt pretty confident that our presence there has been, is safe for us and you you have to understand. We, our facility is very dedicated to children as well, you know? A good chunk of what is existing facility is actually for kids. And um so this is a big concern for us too, so it's not something we want to take lightly. Uh but all of you want to highlight that this is like we did the heavy lifting before we even opened up the church in the first place to make sure like there was no even remote sign. And that's what is on this report. So unless you're saying you just didn't get this report early enough and maybe that's what you um needed. Uh I feel like on the table, we uh what we may need to be able to back at this, but I don't want to be too rushed.
I have a question. In addition, you know, to the to the, uh I'm not prepared to vote on this without knowing more about the, where the playground's going to be and what the soil's like and and how it's been tested. about the where the playground is going to be and what the soil is like and and how it's been tested. But one of the questions I have is about the density of use. A hundred and fifty students and twenty teachers. Is it, can the parking lot accommodate it? Assuming it can, because it's a ginormous parking lot. But but what about a hundred and fifty students coming? What's the traffic going to be like with that many drop offs in the morning and pickups in the afternoon? Is are are there going to be unintended consequences with respect to traffic flow on either Liberty or on Wagner? No, do we have any? Any sense of that? And I don't know if that's a question for you, Laura. I have a question for you, sir.
I I could attempt to respond to that. A little earlier in the midst of COVID, we were a COVID testing site.
I went there.
Yeah. And if you know, at the height of it, there was more use for COVID than we've ever seen. And what we ended up doing is working out a flow around the parking lot. What we like about the current use is that the a lot of the people coming into the offices, checking in, it's about nine o'clock. Parents will be dropping on it, dropping off their kids from eight to nine, and it's a flow. So we just need to work with the with the parents to try and help them understand, how do you map the flow so that people come in and go out without interrupting? So within the parking lot, even off Wagner Road, there is accommodation to be able to do a pretty smooth traffic flow. And we got to do that during COVID.
How do you safely do that? With traffic cones or with painting or with?
Mostly it is signage, we mostly do signage with a clear entry and a clear exit for all the parents.
And that would be part of that. Would that be part of plans that would come before this?
We've we've indicated that.
Do you mind if I stop?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Riser, to be fair, they do have an eight hundred and fifty one seat worship center. So they, that's similar or greater load cars at least one day.
So every Sunday morning, we go through what you're talking about three times because we have three services on a Sunday morning. And we have to figure out how to empty the building and reload the building with many more people than this. And and so and and what you're also seeing with the capacity at one fifty, that is at max. The way the urban flow of daycare goes, typically they would hit those numbers in the summer, they tell us, much more than in the regular school time, because that's when parents have been high need for daycare.
And I don't know, I could apologize. The the we got the times earlier, the daycare is Monday through Friday?
It's Monday through Friday. Over the weekend, we use it for our weekend worship services.
The church currently do any outdoor activities?
On on that facility?
Yes.
We don't have much in terms of outdoor facilities there because we do have an indoor indoor play structure. And we've limited a much of activities to the indoor play structure. Any outdoor activities tend to be an occasional water splash, the fire department comes and stuff like that. I don't know why you ask.
Like a barbecue?
Oh, yeah, yeah, over on the porch, that area, yeah.
But I mean, out back in the the landscaped area.
Yes, 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 we do, yeah.
It's Commissioner Haiden.
You referred to initial testing when you first moved in. Was this a new construction for you? This was an existing building that?
An existing building that was redeveloped, yeah.
So I too would like to see the testing before we vote on approval or nothing.
Great resource, community resource. I mean, child protective services is approved it for parenting time, your facility and your gym and whatnot for kids and parents. So I'm aware of your facility.
Yeah, and I and and I think, you know, you know, given that you have done testing and we just need to make sure, you know, we we need our consultants to weigh in and review it on our behalf. And I think that's sort of, I see the consensus. So I think we can go ahead with a, would it be appropriate to to table pending the review of the current, the testing and any additional testing that you have?
Is Stacy online?
Stacy? No, I'm here.
And I have a question. It relates to, because we're increasing the the load during the week, twenty teachers and up to a hundred and fifty kids, some of whom will be in diapers and not using the toilets. So what's the impact on the REUs that is expected?
We actually didn't look at the REUs on this one since they're not typically reviewed during conditional use. They're reviewed during site plan. But this one, I didn't realize at the time is not coming back in for site plan. So we could definitely look into their current usage and how the proposed use would impact that. But if it is determined that additional REUs are needed, they can still certainly be requested from the board.
I have a process question for the commission, not to prolong this too much. When you're talking about reviewing the results of the testing, the ones you may not have seen yet, is that something you do and then you will make a determination prior to the board? Or do we not need to have another sitting like this prior to that?
So what will happen is tomorrow, they will get the report that I received this afternoon. But you should also, you or Eric should get with me the the latest annual report that you've had completed.
The samples.
Yeah.
Is this the initial testing?
This is the testing from two thousand sixteen.
So that's initial and one you're asking now for the latest.
Yeah.
That's our one.
And so I will get all that information to them and to our our expert. And then, once that's reviewed, you'll come back here on another agenda. You won't have a, there won't be a public hearing. It'll be old business, unfinished business. But then they would make their determination at that point. And then you go to the board because this is a recommending body.
I don't know if we have room for this. A co-poverty owner, he just walked in and Mark Smith is in in the building right now. He owns MihQ and some of the adjacent buildings on there. I don't know if you want to add anything.
I didn't know what the question was, but.
The the big question right now is, based on the our initial site plan.
Yeah.
Based on our initial sample of the soil in that area, we were cleared to do what we're doing right now with the development.
So.
Their question is whether there's been a change. Let me see if I've got you guys correctly. First of all, many of the commission members have not seen, they just saw it today. The report just came in today, so they didn't get a chance to peruse through it deeply. And they're wondering, since then, twenty sixteen is when we did ours, if there's been subsequent tests and if that report is available.
So I think the question is about surface water or surface.
Yeah, I guess where I'm coming from is one of the things that we have to find for conditional use standard is that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses persons or property of public will ever. So it's the idea of a playground on where they're used to spray dioxin.
Right, so going all the way back, the spray irrigation stopped in middle eighties, nineteen eighty eight. Every subsequent test after that was a non-detect in the irrigation field. We did due diligence several times over several attempts to purchase the property. And I think the most, I'd have to look in our records to see what the most recent is. But there's been no spray irrigation since the middle nineteen eighties. And so all surface, ground surface is a non-detect.
And so I think I think what's going to come up is some assurance to this body that that is non-detect and what's the the testing mechanism? Since since there are different testing mechanisms for for dioxin and groundwater out there. So those are likely to come up at a future meeting. I suspect this is going to be postponed to a date.
What is your name, sir?
My name is Mark Smith, four one four four West Liberty, owner of MihQ. And and just about a little more substance to that. We worked closely with Eagle and MDDQ on the restrictive covenants for this property, looking at it very carefully with the understanding that eventually there would be daycare. The only restriction that is carve out is water wells, irrigation wells, and residential use.
You say carve out, you mean not allowed?
In the restrictive covenant.
Not allowed.
It's a deed restriction?
It's a deed restriction through the state filed restrictive covenant.
Okay, one other question, Mark, thank you for coming. But one of the things I was thinking about, especially for a playground, is obviously if they're going to have a fenced in area, we're going to have to disturb there more than a couple inches deep, especially playground equipment, you're going to have to dig down several feet. Has there been any soil testing to see?
Yes, that's referring to soil testing, which was extensively done during due diligence when we acquired the property.
And and that's probably what Laura has, the phase one, phase two, MSA, which we just hadn't seen. We didn't have a copy of it, so we couldn't make any.
Yeah.
Pretty well cataloged.
So, Mr. Smith, you mentioned this restricted covenant filed with the state.
Correct.
Not the county.
I'm sure, well, it's it's registered at the registrar.
Registered deeds, okay, so it's at the county. And it does, it restricts land use so that you can't have residential.
Correct.
And what else?
We can't, we can't do groundwater extraction wells, which would make sense. We did actually have a close, a provision for closure of geothermal, which we intend to do at some point on that site.
But nothing. And in that, in that, and who required the risk?
It was a negotiated agreement between Gelman Sciences, or that actually what we acquired was Paul, and MDDQ and ourselves. And actually, at that time, MDDQ thought we could revisit it because it was non-detect and several of the borings were quite deep. So there wasn't a concern about any, you know, potential exposure.
Good, so that was a privately negotiated document.
Well, yeah, privately negotiated, but it's public record.
I understand.
Thank you. Is that part of the package?
There was the deed in there.
I saw a deed, right?
But it didn't, it wasn't, I don't think it was the restrictive covenant. So that would be also good to provide.
And the purpose of that covenant was to, what? Because that was privately negotiated, nobody forced that on you, but.
That was, actually was kind of semi-forced on us by the seller, saying they didn't want us to undertake.
Or come back at them.
Well, or undertake activities that that could potentially open up risk. But again, once we did the sampling, we found non-detect and have found non-detect in all the, if you went back in the record, all the way back to ninety one or ninety two, I think you saw non-detect in the soil surface.
So not restricting to no, restriction of no residential is kind of like the way living on the property, playing on the property.
No, no, not playing, we actually.
Oh, you can play.
Yes.
And not live there.
We have an exception for daycare schools and playgrounds and that's within the, that's noted in the, if I remember it correctly, in the restrictive covenant.
Interesting. So, yeah, yeah, interesting. So then I think we're ready for a motion. And I think the things that I've heard are the the review of the current current testing and the report that was submitted. Submission of the the deed agreement. I don't know what we should call that specifically, just a.
Talking about the restrictive covenant.
Yeah, the restrictive covenant.
The deed restriction, the restrictive covenant.
Okay. And a review of the REUs.
So Stacy said she could do that in the meeting.
Yes. Any other items? And I don't think we want to postpone to a certain date. Can can we table it too until we get receive that information? Table till additional information is received and reviewed by the appropriate.
Move to a table of this item. Any church daycare new business until we receive more data regarding the testing of the site and have some consultation with some experts on it.
Testing test results for dioxin?
Yes.
And well.
Well, we don't know, whatever they did.
Right, right.
Their original test and any annual test subsequent to that.
Really?
And 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 reviewed by our consultants.
Yeah, or if they deem themselves not able to do.
By an appropriate.
Yeah, that's.
By appropriate expert.
Did you want to, did you want the deed or?
And the restrictive deed submitted as well as then a review, restrictive covenant. And then the REU review.
I would agree with those family amendments.
I would support your amendment.
My motion?
Okay, so moved and amended by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Riser. Is there any further discussion, tabling for that information? Okay, all those, roll call, please.
Hyde.
Yes.
Abel.
Yes.
Rothning.
Yes.
Riser, yes. Walsh, yes. Moore.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Tabling is approved.
Thank you. And we'll get in contact and try and move it along as as quickly as possible.
But fine comments for you all, we're just talking right now. We were not required to do any annual testing since then. We will find you the most recent one we've been able to get.
Only.
That would be great.
Thank you for correcting that, yeah.
Thank you.
My wife is really excited to have the daycare and school coming in. We have a lot.
I think everybody's excited about that, absolutely.
Just tentative about.
So thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business, the Provenzola rezoning. All right. The deliberations, welcome to come up, yep. Commissioner, the thoughts, concerns about this rezoning?
Well, I'll speak first. I'm a neighbor and I I adopt some of the comments that I made earlier during the public hearing. I'm really happy to see that this was going to A1. And so thank you for these good property.
We have everything more beautiful than it exists today. That's a goal, so.
And look forward to it not being such an eyesore on the road. I was, as a neighbor and as a planning commissioner, I've mentioned this property, it's been Jan over the years. Like, how the heck did that, it's only commercial in the first place, but anyways.
Wacky property, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I've said that a lot as we've kind of gone through this process. Like, it's it's like it's perfect for me, but it's wacky in general. So weird, wacky building in the middle of a residential community.
There's a lot of folklore about that, like secret. Computer, computer. Well, working for banks, I don't even know the store.
As long as it's not built in eighteen seventy, like our house in Dexter, and we doesn't come with a ghost named George, we're good. I think we're good. Commissioner, any discussions concerned? Yes.
I'll go next, I'm also a neighbor and so welcome. I like the thought of it being residents. I only have a little bit of concern because you're buying it, but you can sell it too. So we have to keep that in mind. It isn't necessarily this person forever.
Probably.
So what you said, that's that's great. But we all have to keep in mind that this is now a residential property that can be bought and sold. But you've indicated that you want to leave it better. And it's it is currently in our future land use map designated as recreation and conservation, meaning, or I'm getting to, have you considered approaching the LPC, our land preservation committee, and seeing about them purchasing the development rights? I'm just suggesting that because it isn't part of this, you don't have to for us to consider.
I have, I haven't, I didn't know that, I mean, knowledge is power, but no, I haven't. What we did already kind of reach out to is Eastern Michigan University to see, because we're really involved in the architecture and design part of EMU, but we're not really versed in kind of their agriculture programs that they have. But we're trying to do like, I mean, truly a native landscape there. So that is what we're trying to get some education on. And if that means having interns at the property to kind of educate us on what to plant, where to plant, and how to plant, that's kind of part of our our goal with the property as well.
So we're just suggesting that you you contact them because it is in the, it is considered part of our future conservation area.
Land space.
Yes, and you have that on the other side of the road, north of you. And you have it east of you on Marshall Road. So it is all the way along there already. And yours is a potential addition, if you consider it. And then I just wanted to point out that. A1 allows for subdivision, two and a half acres per, or two and a half unit, um.
One unit for two and a half acres.
There we go, one unit for two and a half acres. And RC is five? Is it one unit, one housing unit per five acres?
And there's also like.
It's OS.
It's OS, modern.
No, I know.
It's just saying an alternative.
I'm saying an alternative.
To A1 would be RC.
Because this is in our RC. Future.
So I'll tell you what what it is, but you know, this was advertised as a, as a specific change to A1.
It was.
So if.
We're not in the advertised.
Well, so, well, no, but if you were to change, if you were to recommend it to be rezoned to RC. It has to be reab, it has to be rea, I'm just saying.
I'm not recommending.
So minimum lot area in RC is is five acres.
So there there, but you're not indicating you're you're going to be subdividing it, however, somebody could, and that's. Why I was pointing those out and the Land Preservation Committee. Possibility, so.
Yeah, we don't intend to, we're again, absolutely in love with having that much property, really. I mean, just like so much fun. So.
So consider.
Yeah, not in, not in our future or thought process of intentions at all. Thank you, are there other deliberating questions or concerns that anyone else would like to bring up?
We're not passing on the home occupation, right?
No. That would be.
For rezoning.
Just like any other.
It would be administrative. So by passing this now, we're saying that it's okay, we got to go to A1 unit for two and a half acres, which is what the zoning will allow.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, so anything, anything that would happen, I mean, they could, they could do, um. You know, certain farming, you know, right to farm kinds of things.
By by rezoning to A1, um, they would have, any lot splits would have to meet the criteria for the A1 zoning district. Any of the permitted uses listed in A1 would be allowed, so farming, uh, single-family residential. Um, handful of other, other uses, there's only, I think, six or seven permitted uses.
And as opposed to keeping it office.
And if you know, office service is is, I think it's one acre. Um, and so. You know, I mean, and it's what, six thousand square feet, I mean, it could be, it could be twenty-five people working in there daily.
Yep. This is like.
Yeah, okay, so. I, I think we're ready for a motion.
And based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Uh, the planning, I move that the planning commission finds that the proposed. Provenzola rezoning at sixty-eight, sixty-nine Marshall Road from OS Office Service to A1 General Agriculture. Meets the informational requirements of section thirty-six dash four sixty-one. And the factors found in thirty-six dash four sixty-two of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval.
Is there support? Okay, support from Abel? Okay, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Riser.
Yes.
Rothney.
Yes.
Walsh, yes, Moore.
Yes.
Abel.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Um.
Doesn't go to the board.
Yeah, rezonation.
Everything you do here goes to the board.
Thank you for time.
Thank you.
Love you.
All right, moving on, uh, to possible action, the towns of Honey Creek, uh, conditional use. No, it would just be that. Would be multiple, you want to be specific about what this approves.
So this, all this done has changed the zoning from, so the use is permitted under Office Service.
No, I meant.
The next one?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Conditional use, so you're approving that this particular property meets the conditional use criteria and the master plan for multifamily.
So it may not come back, it, they could come back without townhouses, it could be something different.
Be some other, yeah.
But the idea is that it's it's suitable for multifamily.
And more.
Yeah.
And the more we discuss it, then this guy. The more they continue to count our thoughts for when they actually submit it, because they might not come back like this.
Okay, so we'll open up, uh, Commissioner's discussions on the. Townhouses.
Towns of Honey Creek?
Yes. Okay.
I got it, sure. So are we agreeing?
Better than that, but that's from.
Headed towards the door.
We just have the public hearing, but I'll see you model over everything in detail between your planner.
Sounds good.
You think they go through it, but we can go through and and ask. Specific questions as to you in a second.
Definitely have some questions.
Yeah.
And I know they aren't going to be. Remain to what we're actually voting on, but they will be germane to what was presented to us, please.
Yeah.
Of course. Full disclosure.
Yeah, yeah.
Full disclosure. So, let's start at the, at the first point is, and the point of discussion of. Um, is mu- multifamily a suitable conditional use for this property? And then we'll go beyond that, okay? Okay, how's that for our fair?
What we're gonna vote on first.
Sure.
I I I more support multi-use. Um. Don't care about the uh, like sidewalks, pathways, and playgrounds, but we can talk about that at the appropriate juncture.
But we can give them some guidance, I think.
That's up on that, fellas.
We like sidewalks.
But be precise.
You're taking notes, right?
Yeah.
Part of the township plan has been to link communities as well as to get us communities down to the river.
Yes.
So.
Laura, did I imagine, this was always a conditional use, was never supposed to be a D, correct?
This was not a P U D.
I just imagined that.
Yeah, you can pull up your. I think, I see you have it, I, when I walked behind you, I saw you.
Yeah, I have it, I just need to.
Mr. Bush, another question for you, I looked at the, this isn't, this goes along with Mr. Hyde's comment. How far are you out of the floodplain?
Uh, we're out of it. So how far?
We're on the.
Not as far, but yeah, we're not.
Well, can I say?
I mean, again, this is conditional.
I realize that.
Yeah. They can meet all the other standards.
Yes, but you'll agree to say it, well, my way to go.
Just, just something for the future.
Yeah, my, my question to Laura along that line was going to be. Um. Can they encroach on the floodplain line with? What is this?
That back?
The, it's, the expanded detention pond, because it looks to be like it's actually being built. Into the floodplain area.
Well, I, we didn't look into that.
I know.
So typically, the answer is nothing, we don't want anything of a floodplain, but if it's going to be a detention area, that's a little different, so.
Oh, is it?
Well, that Stacy might have heard, a different, a different answer.
That's a question for Stacy.
So we, in the ordinance, nothing, we don't allow any construction in the floodplain.
So you see the lower, the southwest part of your expanded detention pond is. There's a line going right through the soul.
There's no fill in the floodplain. Planned, we're looking at it.
And they'll have to verify that, exactly.
Yeah. And also the lot, the floodplain line, sheets two and three don't agree, I mean, you're pointing to two different lines. So I'm not sure, maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
Okay, so I take it there are concerns with the use, it's more.
Now more.
Okay.
Right, the detail.
And Laura, would you advise us on what is, what would be the required buffer between residential and industrial? Industrial use?
Well, well, yeah, while you're talking.
Yeah, and I think as.
To the north.
The Riser, yeah, also talked about making sure that it is well-linked, I think, um, there, we've had lots of discussion about. Um, trying to uh, incorporate more um. Multifamily and housing options uh, along Jackson Road and within the sewer and water district, so this certainly meets that.
So there's going to be a new pathway along Stabler, which is to your west on the other side of, and so how, how, how do these residents? Get to their bikes, well, again, it's premature. Uh, I think multifamily is appropriate here, I'm going to support this, but when it comes back. I'm going to be curious about, um, I take it it's going to be all adults, no kids, because there's no playground, and uh. There, I don't see sidewalks or bike paths to try to get, are they gonna, are you gonna have to go through Menards? To get to the pathway along Stabler Road, or is there gonna be, and I don't know what, again, it's not the appropriate time right now, but. Is there gonna be linkage with the sidewalks within trail winds or the, the, along, there's a trail there over to. Again, uh, there's a preserve at the intersection of uh, Park Road and Stabler Road, um, there's some nature areas, there, there's townships. Trying to connect a little border to border within SIO Township, um, across the pathway, so. Getting out of here without going through uh, Menards parking lot. Um, and and recreating and without having to drive is something that I think this planning commissioner will look for in the future, and I've, and I've said my piece, thank you.
Commissioner Hyde.
Uh, Commissioner Riser, um, I would point out that in some of the views, they show. The sidewalk that exists now that goes out. Parallel to that driveway that they're painting as their main entrance. And in some of their views, you don't show that sidewalks, remake that sidewalk, I mean. So I think if they had that sidewalk going out, it would connect it up to the Jackson Boulevard sidewalks. And if they keep that pathway open to the, that goes through to Trail Woods, is that what it is?
Okay.
Uh, that connects up to that development. Um, so keep in mind, keeping, at least keeping it open, but not putting a loop of sidewalk through for your, for your residents.
Interconnectivity.
Yeah, the inter, the interior connectivity is lacking in your design.
It'd be nice to link it with trail winds, with sky, you know, not Skylark, what's across Kirkway.
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 Yeah. And and then I think the other thing, um, is. You know, we're really close to um. The Honey Creek. And the watershed quality is very important, and so uh, minimizing turf grass, it, native planting. Um, all, you know, really make it a um. A, a habitat and really paying attention to the quality of the runoff, because we're increasing the. The stormwater runoff by the impervious surfaces here, so dealing with it at, at, at a maximum on site. It would be preferable and a lot of quality, water quality, um. Um, the, the other item, as you're looking at this, is, um, SIO did pass a resolution to be carbon neutral in the community by twenty thirty-five. Um, and so we are looking for uh. Electrification, decarbonization, and uh, application of renewables, especially, these are going to be sold. Um, and so looking at your, your design, it has a relatively good orientation, but the, the roof lines, you know, paying attention to being able to. Um, have, have these solar ready. Um, there also is a new energy code, um, the, uh, the commercial energy code will probably go into effect in two thousand. In twenty-five, early in twenty-five, the residential hopefully will follow that. Um, but both of those have draft provisions in them for solar ready development as a requirement. So those are, the residential hasn't gone um, through the legislative piece yet, but. Um, those are all good things to, to keep into, take into account when you're coming back as a site plan. I'm sure there might be some other things, people?
You mean the use of native plants rather than turf grass, which needs fertilizing, fertilization, right in the Honey Creek?
Right, so you're in a very, very um, important um, area, and and to making this residential, you have a great opportunity, really. To do it well, you know?
Yeah, and just to that point, as you go, it's all conceptual, but we have done a bunch of soils testing in order to try and infiltrate as much water through the ground as possible. Um, so that aspect of the sign is, is heard, and we'll come back with a best management practices, rain gardens, infiltration bases, all that stuff to. Up your just run on.
And I also think that Menards, because you have a, a great opportunity to, with that whole complex, to really think about place making. And this is a great start, because you have then, you know, you have, this, what, this, the lower density here is. Better, you could even do more higher-density um, mixed-use development in some of the other outlets, so thinking about. Planning, planning this as a place-making um, opportunity and a node within um, SIO is. You know, as opposed to, you know, dividing it up into a lot of little different parcels, so that, I think this is a good, a, a good start. In that direction and maybe, you know, really thinking about what could happen there as far as um, a place-making mode.
If there are no additional comments, questions, or recommended conditions, I'm prepared to move this.
Uh huh.
I would move that based on. The information received from the applicant regarding conditional land use request CU two four zero zero three, towns of Honey Creek. And reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan. The site plan?
Yeah, there's a site plan.
The condition. Land use.
Conditional use.
It, it's a condit, yeah. The proposed conditional use.
Are you on the towns?
Yes.
Yeah, so it should say, it should say conditional use.
Finds the.
Conditional use.
Yeah, I'm not saying site plan.
Right, it's.
By the condition, the, the conditional use.
Mm-hmm.
Res, uh, re, and related information. Received by the township meets the required standards. And findings for conditional land use and recommends approval. Specifically, it is found that the following required standards and findings found in section thirty-six dash two twenty-four of the zoning ordinance. Have been demonstrated by the applicant, period. A, it will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives, objectives and regulations of this ordinance. B, it will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. C, that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police and fire protection. Drainage way, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use. Shall be able to provide adequately, adequately any such service. D, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons. Property or the public welfare. E, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost. For public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And F, it will be compatible with the township's adopted general development plan. That's it, and again, I strike any reference to site plan that I uh, read.
Uh huh.
Mentioned, yes.
I'll support it.
Okay, support fine. Commissioner Walsh? Further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Rothney.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
Riser.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Abel.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And moving along to Alpha House.
Determination of a minor or major in the amendment.
I don't know if they're here, um, so it came to our attention, um. We've had several applications for zoning compliance for minor modifications being made to the Alpha House, including um. Enlarging a couple of several windows and other um, interior improvements that they've been, they've been working on. However, at the county. However, at the county, at the building department, they flagged that somehow, I don't know. None of these applications indicated that they were changing the use from offices to bedrooms. And so that's a big change. And so that requires plant, that requires zoning approval. And since the Alpha House is part of the West Washtenaw Medical Plan Unit Development where the IHA facility is located, um it was, as part of that PUD, um had a specific allowance for a number of individuals that it would service. And that includes um housing, allow housing for thirty-six individuals, families with children utilizing fourteen bedrooms of dis- dis- different sizes. Um that's what they're proposing. Previously, twenty-four beds were available within six bedrooms. And so um in the, in the zoning ordinance, there is criteria under section thirty-six two five four that allows the planning commission to consider whether an amendment is minor or major. Um in reviewing those criteria, we find that um we think, believe that the the change in residential floor space is listed as a minor amendment to the PUD. And we would recommend that the planning commission um consider this a minor amendment. Um and in doing so, it doesn't require a rezoning um to go back through the board. The planning commission can make that determination of minor amendment. Um the caveat to this is, once the, once this use um is rectified, um Alpha House uh there there still is um an outstanding fire um review um dealing with additional suppression that is needed. Um Alpha House has been um notified of that additional requirement as well. So this is one piece um of a few pieces that we have to rectify in order for them to be able to accommodate their services for more individuals. But um we're, we're moving, we're moving forward so that we can help them meet their goals.
So I'm certain that they're not here, so I would move tables to our next meeting. I don't know.
Just to confirm, is there anybody?
Is there anyone?
Yeah, they may be online.
There's a Chanel.
Yeah. Shona, Shona.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
My name is Shona Tarusa and I serve as the executive director of Alpha House. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do you, it's so, we do have a representative here.
Could we hear from the representative, the reason for this expansion, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, uh do you wanna do a quick overview and the the need, uh establish the need for the the change?
Absolutely. So Alpha House is the only congregant family shelter in Washtenaw County. And we're very glad to be at home, find our home in SIO Township. Um but as you all may have heard, we're in the midst of a fam- a crisis in family homelessness. Um I think it's a knock-on effect from the pandemic, as well as the severe lack of affordable housing. But we currently have over a hundred people on our waiting list seeking shelter. There are many different programs that we try to to do to ensure that people find a home. We have a rapid rehousing program. We refer people to hotels and this diversion. But we still know that there's a real need to provide physical shelter. And so we were looking at opening a second location and we actually got a donation of a building um downtown Ann Arbor, the Ashley Building, but we couldn't use it as a shelter. So to try and be creative, we moved our administrative offices to the building that was given to us downtown and um decided to use the offices in order to provide more beds for the families needing shelter. Not only do we provide um shelter for the thirty-six families, we find that when, whenever the weather is bad, whether it's too hot or too cold or this poor air quality, um the need increases exponentially. And we find that families often come to the door, seeking to come out of the cold or the heat. And so we offer a weather amnesty program. And so the extra bathrooms were really needed for, not only for our residents that we, that we'd like to accommodate like during normal time, but for when there's bad weather and we do weather amnesty. We're trying to be creative with the only family shelter in Washtenaw County and we've been given the use of that building and we're trying to make the best possible use we can of it for the benefit of the whole community.
So I just have a question. Is your expansion gonna go in behind you north?
They're in the building.
Oh, oh, just changing the interior of the building.
Administration out.
So we, we added um new vinyl floors and egress windows to the, the former offices. And the main change that we need to make is um to add the extra bathrooms. As part of the um renovations and expansions, we did, we are working on upgrading, upgrading the existing fire suppression system. Um we invited the fire marshal to come out and to tell us what we needed to do in order to be as safe as possible. And with the list he gave us, we've been steadily working through it and checking things off. And so I know there's a recommendation to look into expanding the fire suppression system further. And we'd be glad to do that. The other recommendation was um to move um, I think it's called the FDC. I'm afraid I don't know what that means, but I know it's for where you connect the hose. Um that was moved by Trinity Health IHA when they um built the medical facility. They actually own the land and the building, so we could work with them to figure out what to do about that piece.
So how many beds, more beds are you adding? Bedrooms, I'm sorry.
So we, we're adding, um we have six um bedrooms for four fam- for families of four. The eight offices are gonna be different configurations. Some can accommodate um like a bunk bed in a packing, uh crib. Um some uh smaller, small such that I think that it could be a pregnant woman, possibly an infant in a crib. So it's gonna be another eight rooms, but only ten additional people, twelve additional people. So a total of thirty-six spread across fourteen bedrooms of different sizes. And then we'll have a total of seven full bathrooms and another four half baths.
And Shona, just so you know, the FDC is the Fire Department Connection. I developed a building in SIO, so I, I knew that term, how much you mentioned it.
Okay, thanks.
So uh when it's my turn, I have some questions?
Go ahead.
So I'm looking here at our ordinance, the concept of development, you've got residential there now with bathrooms now and you wanna keep that same concept, correct?
That's correct. We've been there since two thousand and one.
And the character, it's going from resident and office to just resident with not much office, right?
Correct, except I have an office.
Okay, so there'll still be office there?
Yep.
Um the type of dwelling unit, it's gonna be residential and office, it 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 it'll remain residential and office, but with less office and more residential, correct?
That's correct.
And the, and the non-residential floor area is going down, but residential is going up, correct?
Correct.
And the character and the function of any streets, the streets are staying the same, correct?
Correct.
And the, and the building and the, that's the footprint staying the same, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the land, any common space, any, any, any play areas, though, those are all staying the same, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the building height staying the same, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, I mean, speaking for myself, I'm gonna regard this as minor, but I don't know what other commissioners might feel.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I would move to accept. Oops. What do you mean, like, Mr. Like, uh? Based on the information received from the app, been reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the subject resident, somebody else, block in a medical, Alpha House, is a minor amendment. The amendment is to allow an increase in the residential capacity of the Alpha House to include accommodations for thirty-six individuals, families and children within fourteen bedrooms. It represents a change in residential floor space and or a minor variation in layout, which do not constitute major changes. I see no conditions to apply.
I would support that, Mr. Hyde.
Okay. Bye, Commissioner Hyde, and supported by Commissioner Riser.
I would just say that this, this facility is um, it's great work in the community. I'm, over the years, I've been dealing with Alpha House. I have clients that have lived at Alpha House, transitioned in and out of and um appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seems like a smart use of the space they have available.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Being creative. All right, then uh roll call vote.
Walsh, yes. Moore.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Rothning.
Yes.
Riser.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yeah.
Hobartson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. And sorry, we didn't think to check online earlier.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Okay. Great, we did a five-minute break. Five-minute break? Yeah, all right, we'll um take a five-minute break. You can uh stop the recordings and pause it. Okay, we're coming back from our, our break and our next agenda item is um possible action, PUD, FSP number twenty-four oh sixteen crossroads. So this is the final PUD and um have the team here and uh, yeah. Welcome a presentation, because it's been a while and also there's been some changes, so, and a new team member, so we can. Why don't you introduce yourselves again? And we also have some new commissioners, so.
Um my name is Daniel Kettler, I'm the president of Urban Group Development Company, who's the developer of the project. And I'm a member of the ownership, which is Urban Crossroads LLC. And we've been doing this for a few years now. And we started a long time ago as a office project and then COVID came and took all that away from us. So we redesigned it, we were working with the same team, except we have a new architect here. And uh, want to introduce yourself?
Uh my name is Steve Vanderclock. I've been an architect in Michigan for twenty-four years. And I was brought onto a team that I think has been established for cleaning twenty years, is that what?
Not this project.
Not this project for twenty years.
Not this project, but yes, I worked with Washtenaw Engineering for thirty years, Shannon for what, ten?
Oh, no.
No?
No.
You're not that old?
Oh, no, it's, it's a good fifteen.
Oh, fifteen years, this has been a while. So, but we've been working on this project, this residential portion now for, well, two years. And we went through and got the approvals, preliminary approvals, and uh then the world sort of changed again. Interest rates went up, cost of constructions went up, we had to reevaluate the project again. It's been a difficult process, it's been a learning experience, and it's been a long process. But here we are in this, where we are now, and uh we think we've brought to you a very nice project. It's, it's been refined over the years and uh, but each of us went and have something to share with you. And what, what we've done, and I'll talk, there's a community benefits portion of it that's significant. And I'll, I'll finish that up at the very end of it, because it's a, it's a long process. So what I'd like to do here, if we could, is have Joe from Washtenaw Engineering talk about the site, what it is, and various parts of that that may interest you, and then obviously we'll be here to entertain any questions as we finish this.
I'm Joe Mader with Washtenaw Engineering, um site civil engineer and site surveyor for the project. Um hey, I just wanted to thank uh planning commissioner here and the staff and planner and engineer and county and working with us on this. Uh we've gone through a lot of hard work. Uh we've got pretty much all our approvals. No conditions on site plan from county, fire department, or engineer. Or I think we saw some minor items for administration, but um far as we're concerned, we're all approved. Um I can go over the project, I mean, it's got public sewer, public water. Um where I kinda wanna just highlight on some of the sustainable items for the project, because I feel like that's what you're most concerned about. Um one main item is infiltration. So not only does, not only does Crossroads achieve a hundred percent infiltration, we're also working with the neighbor knife funeral to infiltrate their stormwater system as well for a hundred percent infiltration. Um we do that through two um underground subsurface infiltration beds. And I think it was five different rain gardens onsite, uh bordering along uh Liberty and Wagner. Uh Shannon, getting more details on that later. Um the other part of this is EV charging, so the project does come with EV charging. Uh we have level one charging uh within the twenty-four garages in the carriage ho- um homes. And then level two charging, located in three different locations on the project. Four EV chargers at the Commons Building and four chargers within each of the podium buildings, for a total of twelve chargers there. Um both bike parking and alternative transportation here is very important for this project. Um project requires twenty-three bike parking spaces. We're actually proposing ninety-two. Um twenty-eight of which are spread out throughout the project for visitors or just outdoor parking for bikes. Um we've got twenty-eight that are within, excuse me, I'm sorry. Twenty parking spaces in each of the podium buildings. Um I believe, David, those are in the basement, right? So that they have access to those? Yeah, okay.
It's, it's a bike room in each building.
Okay, so it's secured, locked. Okay, good. And then twenty-four in each of the carriage garages uh that are bordering on the south property. Um alternative transportation, um we've been working and we'll work more in depth with the approval here with the Ann Arbor Transportation Authority, try to get bus stops located at the corner of Wagner and Liberty Road. There's gonna be people coming and going from the city, um along with proposed public improvement sidewalks from our project, all the way down to the Syle Ridge, crosswalks at Wagner and Liberty, uh so we can get across the street safely with push buttons, pad button stands. Um last item I'll cover is, you know, our, our open space design. One of the things we tried to do is, is create this general common open space in the middle, you'll see, we showed the presentation, uh where we've got about a half acre of green lawn, some walkways through it, lots of amenities. Uh common building, echo ball court, you know, pool and all kinds of other amenities that we'll get into more in detail. But the idea here is, you know, we're providing about fifty percent, seven percent of our site is open space for the residents to use. And meaningful open space where really congregated gathering.
Thanks, Joe.
David?
Now, is there a way that I could share my screen here?
What's your computer?
So you should be able to the bottom, there should be a share. Thanks, Kathleen.
I understand you're very familiar with the site. Before you, I thought it was an office project to the residential project, then I was brought onto the team uh somewhere then to last year around December. And as I was saying, I hadn't worked with this team in this capacity. Joe and I have worked together on another project before. Um this site plan and the buildings that are proposed haven't changed much from what you had last seen when they went through the preliminary P and D process. The thing that has changed the most is down on the south boundary where you see the six rectangles. Before, there were townhouses proposed on that south boundary. These are now what we call carriage houses. And you'll see what those look like when we go through. Carriage houses, in short, are um one-bedroom flats over top of garages. And then we did go through where there was the, the Commons Building was never fully developed in the last uh evolution of this project. So now Dan and the team and I were able to go through and actually refine it for the amenities around there and determine what exactly that Commons Building was to support. This more diagrammatic, but the same site plan was on the first. This more diagrammatic, but the same site plan was on the first slide there, uh, there are fourteen total structures. So on this site, the number one building, the yellow building, is the Commons Building. You see the large green in the middle that Joe was talking about. Um, you have, the orange buildings are two-story multifamily, both floors are residential. And in the green buildings, you have first floor parking, and then you have three floors of multifamily residential above, as was proposed before. And then again, on the south boundary, the six dark blue are the ones that were changed from townhomes to carriages. Commons Building, um, much of what you would expect inside here, just massaged a bit for the tenant that they're trying to serve. Uh, you have your fitness center, you have a multipurpose room, you have a flex shoe space, you have onsite property management, and then you have some, uh, workspaces that the tenants can use for office and conferences.
One thing I'd like to point out though too is that with that, the connection which he's going to show between the interior and the, and the amenity areas is, I think, pretty, uh, seamless in how, how they relate to each other.
Yeah, Dan is correct, we went back and forth on this team of what we could provide, and we do have a pool, a hot tub area. Uh, we did get a pickleball court in there, which everybody, uh, seems to support that one where pickleball was at in our society now. Uh, fire tables, the grills, and other gathering elements that we'll be able to see when we look at the three D animation portions of this. Um, now, one thing, when I was brought onto this team, I hadn't been in Syle Township before, I haven't been at this table with you before. And so I had to spend some time kind of driving around and looking at what my first impressions are and what I believe the architecture would be. I mean, as an architect, sometimes we go in and you talk about context and how do things fit in comfortably, and sometimes part of context is doing contrast. And if you were to look at my portfolio, there's a lot of geometry, there's a lot of color. I have a lot of projects that are called Dr. Seuss Buildings. I didn't see that here in your community, I saw something more comfortable. So you're seeing the front of the Commons Building here. You can see from the arrow there, that's up in the upper right-hand corner there, shows you the view of which that's taken. Saw something more comfortable, Dan and I went back and forth on materials, we're still seeing, uh, residential character, residential scale materials. We're seeing some fiber cement siding, board and batten, uh, asphalt shingles. This is the view across that Commons area, that green area. On the left of this view, you're seeing the Com- the Commons Building, and off to the right, beyond the pickleball court, you're starting to see the same architecture and geometry in the garden-style buildings. And then this is that amenity area where we're talking about, where it seamlessly will hold out into that community area where you will have the, the fire tables in the community area where, where the tenants can lounge there. Now, the carriage houses that we talked about, let me roll back so you can see which, this is kind of, that's taking down that south lane, looking off to the, the east. Um, this is what has changed, um, I don't think it's too far off from the townhouse carrier you saw before. It's just you have flats over top of garages. And I think this is a comfortable residential scale and geometry, and the scale of the materials that are proposed here. Uh, we are planning on going through and doing a board and batten siding on these as well with asphalt shingles. And here you'll start to see, very simple, these buildings are small, they're about fifteen hundred square feet on the, on the garage level, and then fifteen hundred of plus minus. And then these are one-bedroom flats with decks off the back that overlook the, what is now the farm field where people say where the cows are grazing. The garden-style buildings, I thought that the architect that was involved with the project before did a really good job on these. I, I loved how they looked, I thought they looked comfortable, I loved the large arcade balconies that were on here. I love these buildings, I didn't do much at all with these. And so other than blending the materials in that were proposed on the other buildings, you're not seeing much movement on these buildings at all. These were in place and, and good from where I start. And much is the same as what you were presented, I didn't have a lot of concern with the floor plans either. These are a blend of two bedrooms and one bedrooms in these buildings, you have eight two-bedrooms and eight one-bedrooms per building. And of course, there are five buildings, but as you can see, they have very large deep porches on them. Podium buildings were probably, other than the Commons Building, probably the most underdeveloped buildings architecturally in the last package you could have saw. Um, and we went back and forth on this one quite, for quite some time, because it almost looked like they were large blocks carved out of, so I don't think they ever really got the attention that they needed to make them feel comfortable. And this is, in my portfolio, this would be the most residential-scale podium building. And I honestly believe in your community, it was needed, and bringing in two four-story buildings, or, you know, three stories of residential over parking. And I really like how this carried through, and I like the fact that we brought in a wood look material on here, blended in with the white fiber cement board siding, to give it a little bit more character at that scale. Um, but again, I feel it's very comfortable. I believe this is our last. You see the carriage house, or, you know, the carriage houses there anchoring down this lane and the podium building up above.
Are, can I ask you a question about the podium? By looking at, um, four, on the ground, what was that, underground parking?
It, it is parking on a first floor. So the way that the grades are, um, this building is what is the easterly building. So east is up to your left in this slide, and south is where your vision is pointing. Um, and in this building, you have first floor parking, and then the way the grade is, um, along Wagner, uh, the grade abuts the building, so it looks like a three-story building. But much is the same for the northerly building, you just have more exposure on the streets.
But at the bottom there, where the dark windows or whatever that is, that's not parking underneath.
That is parking, yes, that's parking and other amenities, that's where the bike storage is, that's where the lobby is, that's where the trash and recycling room is.
But because of the grade change on Wagner, that is un- that is undergr- is below grade on the Wagner side.
A view from the Wagner side, I didn't see one. I'll, I'll let you go through your presentation.
Oh, that's fine. It actually, it would look much like this, only that the grade is pulled up on the garage level, so it's a three-story. Here you see the park, uh, parking spaces on that first level. The, the red bubbles there are the four EV stations that Joe had spoken about. The yellow being our trash and recycle room, the purple being our lobby, green's our utility room, and then you'll see that bicycle parking room that, that Joe had spoken about. It's probably too small for you to see here, but this is a collection of our two bedrooms, one bedrooms, studio. This is a typical floor plate for floors two, three, and four. Typical two-bedroom unit. Typical studio unit. One bedroom, one bath.
This package was, when we submitted the site plan, was part of the site plan package, so you should have had access to it. Um, and it was sent digitally too, so.
This is much the same, these are just the, the boundaries isolated, so we don't, we don't have a bird's eye view that shows that side on Wagner. It, it looks.
I get it, I guess I was asking if you had it.
That's where we've come though, from the tail end of last year, when it was before your last time, to where we are tonight. I think we've gone through and refined it, there hasn't been a lot of movement, so, and had to kind of push a wall six inches here, a foot there, just to make the interior, now that we're developing those properly, work so that they work for development and housing. But other than that, um, along the south boundary and that Commons Building were the things that, uh, south boundary was what probably the biggest, is the biggest change, and then the refinement of the commons.
Could you go back to the Commons Building for just a minute?
One of the things we've tried to do with this is just to make this, other than just an apartment community. And one of the ways we did that is by putting parking in the podium building, so it's below, it's, it's a grade. And that opened up the center of this. Could you go back one more? Back here, yeah, so, what you have, what we have here is essentially the center of this is a, we, the, we, we started with the idea a long time ago, when we did a preliminary, we've talked about this, is a village green as a center. And then, uh, uh, if you want to go down one, then we've added in what we call the Commons Building. And in the Commons Building is, is workplaces for people to come, if, if they want to not work at home, they have offices there they can go to. There's, uh, we haven't fully programmed this, so you have a huge space at the bottom, which will be, uh, fireplace, uh, large screen TVs, this sort of thing, so places for people to gather. So we look at this more as a lifestyle community, as opposed to just apartments. And we have a lot of green space, a lot of apartments you go to, it's just, it's concrete, it's driveways. And we've tried to get out of that, we've tried to create something that's walkable, that's, that has green space, not just green space in a patch here, in a patch there, but as a collection of green spaces. And within that, you have, we have our infiltration beds, and Shannon here has put, you can't see it, but there's, in, to the right of that green space, there's a, there's a grove of trees, and I just found out it's, it's more trees than are required. As she kept from me for a while, but she has, she, that is a hammock space, was she designed.
Hammock?
Hammock. It's, it's a hammock, it's a hammock area. I said, the trees are too small to carry the hammocks, we're going to post it originally, but that is a hammock area in, in there. And then you have all this walkie green space, and the pickleball court is, is, as David said, it's just, I, I'm amazed at how popular it is. But it is, it's become a very popular sport. And then we have fire pits, um, uh, uh, grills for outside, of course, a pool, the hot tub. So you have a community area. And then off the top, if you go just, just to the north of the pickleball court, we have grass parking spaces, they can be parked in there year-round, but it's going to be set up so you have electricity there for, for, uh, uh, food trucks to come in. Come in, set up, and, and on a Saturday or Friday night, the community can come down, use the space, they have places to hang out, to, to mingle, to get to know each other, and, and have this, it becomes, it becomes a community.
And then spaces.
Light green.
The light green and kind of.
Yeah, those will be for food trucks.
Scale is, uh, I'm, I'm trying to get the scale, would the trucks be fitting in, nose in? Or do they have to go parallel parking, or I mean?
Depends on the type of truck that comes out there, so, we're kind of planning them to come nose in, yeah.
So it's set up to be?
Thinking maybe a couple, it's, there's room for a couple good-sized food trucks to come, so you get two different parts of it. And, um, we think that's, we think that's, and then you have in the common buildings, there's a, there's a full kitchen in the one corner, could you go to that area? There's a full kitchen in this, it's right in there. And so that goes right out to the grills and all that, so if you're grilling and you want to use the kitchen, or the refrigeration and all that sort of stuff, it's right there for you. So, you, you know, you, you've essentially extended your home into a common space that you can use with other people who live in the community. Okay, that's the whole idea behind it, it's a commu- we want to try to create a community out of this. And I think with the group we have here, we've done a pretty good job of it. And again, that, we haven't fully programmed the, the interior space of this, where you see one area there that says yoga and meditation meeting, and then you have, of course, your fitness with your weights and your, all the bicycles and things like that. Um, one of the things that's new over the last few years, since I've had this before, is the package uh, uh, room, it's, it's gotten huge, because pack, everyone's getting deliveries. So that becomes a huge part of these, these developments now, you know, because that's where the packages will come. Okay, I just wanted to share th- those parts with you.
How, where do you enter the complex off Liberty?
Yeah, you have a, we have two entrances, the one off Liberty, which is the main entrance, it's a boulevard entrance. And then off of, we have a shared drive with Nye Funeral. So that, that's, that's a secondary entrance.
And that's off Liberty Two.
And that's off Liberty Two, that's right. The, the, the Wagner, if you remember, we're like sixteen feet below Wagner. There's a quite a drop, you know? So when you're going down Wagner, you'll just see the top two stores of that building, of those buildings of the, and we put the podium buildings specifically on the outside edges, sorted to buffer the interior from that busy road. And one of the things that we, Shannon and I just talked about this, one of the things that in the master plan for Syle Township is, you want to keep your rural atmosphere as you develop. So we've done a lot with trees and plantings along the outside edges, and then coming in to, to support that concept, because we like it, for one. And we also think it's, it helps create a community by having, having a lot of trees and vegetation. And as, as Joe said, there's four, um, uh, what are they called?
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens, yes, which, which Shannon did the last six eighteen South Main is the last project I did in Ann Arbor. We have an acre of land. There is no water that goes into a storm sewer system, she created a rain garden underneath this building, so that it infiltrates all, all of the water, doesn't go in the storm system at all, and she's done something similar here. So if we would, Shannon, you want to take it from there?
Sure, yeah, well, everybody's pretty much talked about all the stuff that I did, and thanks, guys. Um, I will, I'll just add a few things, um, uh, one is that, um, we really relied on native vegetation here, and you will notice that, you know, as Dan spoke about, that we're trying to be sensitive between this interface of the more rural part of Syle Township and coming into the edge of Ann Arbor, because we're right near that border that's there. So the whole perimeter is all prairie plantings, and, uh, prairie plantings, native prairies. Um, and, uh, native trees and shrubs, and those are carried all the way through in areas where there's going to be higher traffic, we have lawn, but really, we're relying on native vegetation for a lot of this area, uh, which is good on many levels, habitat, all kinds of things, but it also, uh, really has a strong character in terms of what is, uh, I know that is important to Syle Township, especially given what's right next door now with the lovely farm and the cows grazing and all, all that, uh, nice stuff right next door. So, um, that's, uh, something that's a little bit different too, I think. Um, uh, the other piece is that we do have this funny little geometry left over in the lower left, and that is a, um, part of the underground infiltration for the Nye Funeral Home, and there's going to be a dog park on top of that, upper residence too. Um, so, uh, uh, Dan's a big dog guy, so we need to make sure we had a dog park in there somewhere.
In fact, he's part dog, I think.
Yeah. Um, and I think that, uh, we're, I, I'm, I'm pretty blown away by what we got in terms of infiltration rates for this project. So we have a couple of underground infiltration areas, I think we were ten times the rate that they even allowed us to infiltrate. I mean, this place is never going to overflow, so I think that the way that this site is situated, there's so many things that are really great for a more dense development. Because there's a lot of impervious surface, because there's cars and buildings and all that sort of thing, and it's really truly going to infiltrate. The other thing that I think is powerful about it is that because it's at this corner and so close to Ann Arbor, there really is this way that, I mean, and, and I'm one of them, I bike out here when I, when I come out here, not at night, I didn't bike here tonight. Um, but there really is a good bike lane all the way to Ann Arbor here, and that's why we have so many bike spaces here. And then Dan will get into this more, but, um, you know, the addition of the sidewalk is going to be in between, the, the, there's one section that's really terrible, and that's the section, this last little bit.
At the ridge.
After the bridge, exactly. And there's a sidewalk or part of it up to the, the road, I forget what.
Syle Ridge Road.
Syle Ridge Road, but, uh, Dan's going to connect it from this all the way there with pedestrian cross. Syo Ridge Road, but uh Dan's going to connect it from this all the way there with pedestrian crosswalks at this intersection, and that's a real game changer.
By that bridge.
What's that?
Bent bridge.
Uh beyond, it'll go all the way up to the fitness center. Yeah.
Liberty, a long, long way, not not just a lot or two.
You're gonna do that or? That's part of our community benefits.
Yep.
You already had to speak about one word.
What's that?
You're gonna speak about at the end.
Well, we're speaking about it now.
Transition, right, your stuff.
No, no.
Well, I'll start asking.
No, let's uh yeah, and we need to go through Laura's too, yeah, yeah. So I think that's really the 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 gist of it in terms of things that uh we have built in, but um, I think that again, the um. I think this location is especially set up for having something more intense because it's in the sewer district, because it's so close to Ann Arbor, because there's a. Almost viable way to get there by biking by walking and with this development, you will complete that less a little bit, that's really powerful too. And I think that, you know, at the edge of Syo, it makes sense to have the density shift a little bit. But keeping in mind the aesthetics of it, really thinking about how we can integrate and marry. Uh, the rural character of Syo Township with. The future that we are all facing, which is that we're pretty much in a housing crisis, folks, and so this is a way that Syo can start. Stuffed up, being part of the solution for that.
May I? Sure, something, we um. For the community benefits, we're one of the main things we're doing is taking it, Shannon just sent a walkway. From our property all the way into the fitness center. And this was put in your package, but I we've heard about eleven by seventeen, so you can maybe look at it a little better, but this show was. Get two of them there that I gave you?
Oh, here, I have two.
Two, one, two, one.
No.
Would you guys? So that that lays out the the walkway that we have and and other pathways. And on the, if we go through the, as Joe mentioned. The intersection that's on the cor- that's on that corner, we'll put, we're working with the county to make it so you we could have crosser cross streets there. You push a button, it'll do a walk, stay, that sort of thing. And then the the big thing is also bringing in the buses, so uh. We had some preliminary discussions with Ann Arbor area. And we'll have to, we'll have to develop that a little bit more because that's not mature. But there's money in the budget for it, that's part of the.
Money in your budget?
In our community benefits budget. If you have the community benefits, you see it's a it's a, I don't know, it's five or six pages, it's a whole list of what we're going to do. I know a gentleman called earlier and he said, well, about the fire, well, we're donating a certain amount of fire, but. Our total amount is probably eight, nine hundred thousand dollars cost to us. To develop these benefits for the community, that's what we're doing. But you have the whole package, I think, right?
I don't know that it went with this.
I didn't see it.
No, uh it so Mariah, Mariah is reviewing it, um, this is. You had them in in the preliminary, right, uh right, Dan?
Yes.
They were part of the preliminary discussion.
Well, they're they.
It wasn't refined.
Oh, it was it 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 was refined for the. The board, and that's where I said, that's where I sent you.
Yes, and so and the and Mariah is is review reviewing them. In anticipation that they are going to go to the board with the final DVD, so.
I could go through this, I'm sorry, I thought you folks all had a copy of that.
Wasn't fucking now.
No, when we met last time, we talked about various things like a fire truck, et cetera, but it was never refined at this level.
I'm sorry, I didn't do, I would have done, I would have done done the copies of this.
Well, and I just want to, so in all due respect to you though, that that community, the the community benefit discussion is at the board level. They they make those, so to have it provided to you so that you can see what's what's being proposed is one thing, but. Really that and you can provide some recommendation to the board, but the board has the, you know, they have total authority over you.
So I'm not clear about that, I hear what you're saying, because previously communication with us was. They wanted us to work through many, many details, now it may be different now, maybe it's different now.
I think, I think.
The years that I've been on the planning commission, which is down bore, um. So I'm fine to know that, I'm glad, I I hope I'm getting the clarity I need now. Because before, we have spent a lot of time talking about.
Why don't I just walk you through it?
It's okay, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, I don't I don't have a problem.
Yeah, if you could just kind of go through the the list.
We had this set up under four areas, utilities, fire department, pathway plan. And sustainability. Okay, those are the four major areas that we. The township utilities, fire department. Pathway plan, because that became a a big deal tying this into the city of Ann Arbor and then. To the, we also have a pathway going north on Wagner, because it there's a, from the corner, there isn't a path. But a path starts further down, so we tie into that existing path. Okay, and then sustainability. We've talked quite a bit about sustainability of what we're doing with the project. And a lot of it's creating the green space, the plantings, infiltration, all of this sort of thing. So for the uh. For the community benefits for utilities, um. We've talked to township engineer, there was no reason, no need for improvements for utilities in the area. However, we we've uh offered a contribution to utility project of of of, I think we. I don't know how much it was, it's up in O H M, we need to talk about with the O H M. But one thing we did do, there's a there's a pathway that designed, over a joke, I talked about that because. The township bought the developer rights to this property to the south. Sold it and now there's there's cattle, you know, on it. But they kept a certain acreage for a fire station and a water plant of some sort.
Oh, a new water tower.
So what we've agreed to do is create a pathway over our property to that water tower. So that a truck can come in and have access to it. All right, so that's that's part of our community benefits.
Parkway or driveway?
Driveway, a pa- a pathway that's a drive, and a single truck can go over, is what was requested.
Okay, okay. Like a utility truck?
Yeah, supporting about wide maintenance easement, so when they develop it, they can install the drive accordingly. So we've accounted for that in our designs.
And then we would contribute twenty thousand to the utility fund, as far as we knew that was what that was acceptable to that. For the fire department, we said we would work with the fire department on. The building, if they ever build it, I don't know what's going to happen with that now because the millage had passed, so we no, we don't know. But we're going to give, we offered eighty thousand dollars when. The former chief was here, we sat down and talked with him. And he was trying to get a ladder truck, and we said we contribute to it, obviously we can't buy a full ladder truck, it's. I thought they were a few hundred thousand dollars or one point two million dollars, it's a huge amount of money. So we said we donate eighty thousand to it, he was delighted, and so that's part of our community benefit. The big part of it, which is over half a million dollars or even more, is the wa- the pathway. To the to the east on the south side of Liberty Street to the fitness center. Okay? And Joe has already done some of the, laid that out, we walked with the county. We they've got, we've gotten their verbal approval that this works for them. And we figured out, Joe's figured out how he can make it work, it's going to be difficult, I think, in some of the areas. But it's it's a five foot concrete walkway which will go into there. And then, as I said, there's a pathway to the north that will connect with the existing path on the west side of Wagner. To the north side of Liberty and Wagner Crossing. So if you come out of that corner, do you have a pointer you can do there?
I certainly do, I'm learning as I go.
But you have on the, what I passed out to you, they have those maps showing where the walkways are going to go. Or where they're they're designed to go. So if we go right across Liberty here on Wagner and go to the north, that's where the pathway will go.
Oh.
Okay.
I thought you were working on an idea of connecting the pathway.
So then we have another pathway that goes across Wagner and goes all the way in on Liberty on the south side. It's about half a mile.
Half mile.
Half a mile, and it ties in with the city of Ann Arbor walkway. So there's two walkways we're doing.
To the east and to the north?
There's one to the north across Wagner, across.
Get you to the 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 trailhead behind two four two church in Saginaw.
Saginaw Forest.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, through through the Syo View and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Westward there.
Yeah. That's exactly right. And then to the east to the, I don't know, um.
Hooking into.
Syo.
And I raised sidecar, right. So there's two pathways, one goes to the north and that's actually quite a bit shorter. But it does tie into that pathway that goes into the 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 woods. The church, yeah, that's a nice entry now, by the way, isn't it? So, so that's part of it, and then of course the, as we talked about, um. Two public bus stops in hand with the A A T A, one to be located on the northeast corner of Liberty and Wagner and one located on the north side of Wagner Road. Before the intersection of Liberty and Wagner, sorry, is that right, Joe?
Yes.
And uh.
Have you got a commitment from them, are they open to it?
They're old, they were open to it when we talked to them a year and a half. And.
Because they, right now, they turn left into Syo Ridge and miles away.
They have to be a little loopy.
There's so much development going on to the west of us, those, that housing development in there is quite lovely, actually. And uh that that all that's going to do is grow and bring more people in, and if we can create a bus system that works. They're going to get, it's going to get used.
You're saying that A A A A.
That was.
Was hazard of late, except looking at, instead of turning left on Syo Ridge.
When we got to that point, they would talk to us about it.
Yeah, I think the information we got from them when we brought it up with when we were dealing with the transit. Information was, it's not in their current plan. So I I think there's a little bit of a gap there, but obviously this is going to take some time, but I think that might be something that.
You're going to have so many people that are going to need, that are going to want to use that transportation, that it's. We have to show the need, I suppose.
Yeah, it follows the density, you don't do it before the density, you do it after the density. But but in in any event, we, that may be something that. It deserves some discussion.
And and the township could probably help us with that too. Okay? Um, then the sustainability features, um. One of the things we we I said in the sustainability, one of the most sustainable parts about this is taking this piece of land. That has just been sitting there forever, I mean, it's uh. A lady in the office at Syo Township showed me a picture, there was an old farmhouse on there for years. But all we've ever known it is when it was all. Turned over and it was, you know, it's like it looks now.
Grated.
It was graded out, yeah. So, turning this into a. Community like this is probably the most sustainable thing we can do overall. All the other stuff is smaller sustainability periods, but by taking a a community, a piece of land like this and making it to a community. A a value that creates a huge tax base for the township, by the way. And also all all the housing that goes with it. So that to me was a number one. Um, and then, of course, the infiltration beds that we did and extensive interior walkways we have throughout. We have a walkway that goes up Wagner, we'll have stairs going up Wagner, up uh to the south of us. Uh to Wagner Road and to the walkway up there. And of course, all our electric vehicle charging, we're putting in as as part of the project. Well, there's, in each of these garages, there'll be a single, what are they called?
Level one.
Level one chargers.
Hundred and twenty.
Twenty four.
Twenty outlet.
Yeah, that's overnight, they'll get.
They're for they're for people with their homes and they park their car and they charge.
I mean, we all have level ones in our house.
Yeah, but we're putting them all in the garage, so they're e- easy to access by the for the cars.
So level one ready or level one chargers?
Level ones.
It's a hundred.
There's there'd be level one chargers.
Every, every.
Every.
Parking spot has an outlet. If you think of a big parking garage of these podium buildings, every, you know, they're they're going to have.
So the person has to go by the unit, the charging unit now.
No, you just plug in, yeah.
Okay, so level one, I I I'm not. I just went through with. Yes, you plug you plug them in, but it's a level one, it's not a quick charge. Level two is what's in the podium buildings, and level two is on this on the curb side outside of the common buildings.
And how many chargers altogether, do you know?
Twenty four, twelve and twelve, is that right?
No, it's twenty four, twelve.
Twenty four and twenty.
Thirty six.
Thirty six total?
Thirty six level.
There's twenty four, level one.
Twelve, level two.
And it'll be set up so the podium building, if you want to go to the garage of the podium building for a minute. So that it can be expanded out, if there's if there's a demand for it, which, you know, it's sort of it's sort of start and stop, isn't it, with electric? You know, sometimes it feels like it's going to just take off, other times it just feels like it's sitting still. So we have it so that we can expand this in our podium buildings and we can ex. And we'll see what we can do as far as making them accessible on the public streets too. But in the podium buildings, we know we can expand them. Okay, as the man comes up.
And that's, you you've got the commitment from D T and E, D T. Consumer D T E for for that electricity. We've had that issue before where um developers have wanted to put in a high, you know, high energy. Charging stations, but they couldn't get it from the transformer or the substation or whatever, you know, getting it.
These aren't high, these aren't level threes.
These are.
These are in two, ones and twos.
So two is was.
They won't have the same.
Twelve twos.
I I haven't heard anything like that, so I don't know.
We design. We haven't applied to D T E yet for this project, that goes as a total package to D T E.
Okay.
Uh, the infrastructure is there because it was previously installed for the prior office center, so there's a main.
I would say.
Subline on the property.
I would say the earlier the better and starting discussions with D T E. My understanding from several developers is so.
From personal experience, it will be at least six to twelve months before they can provide power to this project.
Well, the power is right there now. So it's 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 a matter of distributed, but D T E is 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 a. Uh without getting too far into it, they do seem to have some problems. So those those are the summary of the community benefits, there there are more detail in writing and um. So anyway, I I I didn't know you folks didn't have access to that at this stage.
Um, did you resolve the commitment to um all electric?
Well, we're not doing all electric, but we're doing mostly electric. Uh, it looks like the heat pumps are doable. We asked our contractor to do it because we wanted to price it out, and it looks like that's a viable alternative, and we're meeting with them. At the end of next week, they're they're pricing the whole project out, and we've asked them to put heat pumps in it. Okay, so that would be a part of it, uh, but there will be gas in some locations, David, for.
We, uh, the podium buildings by code, we have to have a generator that operates the elevator shafts for a. Accessible means that you dress because of the height, um, and those generators are natural gas. But then also the volume of air that we have to condition, since it is an assembly building, the commons building will also have some rooftop units. Yes.
Did you, uh, just encouraging you, I mean, if you feel like you need to, I mean. Dedicated outside air, um, look at, um. You know, G O is is relatively expensive, but you do get thirty percent tax credit on it all. Um, but it, you know, if you're using it as a heat pump with maybe a natural gas backup. Um, but if you're primary primarily using electricity, it it really helps from the long term. Um, carbon. Uh, required, you know, we're trying to eliminate. uh, required, you know, we're trying to eliminate those carbon emissions.
Sure.
And anything that is gas. It's understandable with generators, um, but, you know, perhaps that backup doesn't have line very often um, with those rooftops. And, um, then the other thing, go ahead.
So that's part of your sustainability, uh, package that you would have mostly electric.
Yes.
Did you define that for, uh, for the township when you submitted it to, for?
In, in the package, it has the reference to, uh, the, uh, heat pumps. And, uh, not in, in the, in the package that we gave for the, the, uh, community benefits.
Okay, so in that community benefits, it did go into it. That's good. That's what I was trying to. Just, they are reviewing that or?
Well, it was what was, it was what was given to. You have it.
Right, yeah.
So that when it goes to the board, they'll have it.
Yes.
We, we took what was approved, what you folks wanted. We fine tuned it for the board and they made some suggestions and we've fine tuned it since then and then resubmitted it.
And just recently, there was, there's been some back and forth of a couple of changes, right, between Mariah and, and.
Yeah. Yeah, my attorney and Mariah are, are going.
Working on it together.
Yep.
Yes.
So, and then, but what I gave, which we had, we had a meeting and you were there, Mariah was there and I gave her the community benefits and she used that as the basis for the development agreement. So it's in there and then it was sent to my attorney. He gave it to me. We talked about it. He replied to her and they're going back and forth. It's fine tuning that. So all of that will be in the development agreement. Um, is this to be in action on them tonight?
Um, we don't, I mean, it's up to us.
Because.
Because we, I mean, there are some things that we need to, that we need to.
Do we, do we need to hear from Stacy and Maria?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Premature in our question.
Yeah, I was going to say, we hope you'll vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
Hope tonight.
For the pre question, pre question.
Yeah, yeah, because we need to hear from Laura. So, yeah, they can't finish. I think the end.
Hardly stay within the guidelines.
So, yeah, so Laura, why don't you go ahead and go through your review?
So I'm going to be brief. Um, I think, um, there were just a few minor changes from the preliminary plan, which were pointed out. The main change, uh, as David said, is the change from the townhomes to the carriage houses along the main or the south, um, property line. Um, overall ground floor area had been reduced, um, so that it reduced the lot floor, the floor area ratio, the lot coverage, um, et cetera. So, um, those are outlined on page four of my report. There are six items, um, that I discussed. Um, just for clarification, um, the preliminary P U D, um, was recommended for approval, uh, at, at your August eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting. It's been a while. Um, and during that meeting, you recommended approval with, um, several conditions or additional things, um, for the Board of Trustees to consider. And then on September twenty second, the Board of Trustees, um, also approved the P U D preliminary plan with a number of conditions. Um, and those included, um, the, the benefits that we just talked about, that, that is, are going to be part of the development agreement that's currently under review. Um, and then the, the thing that Dan hasn't talked about that I, I'm going to have to, um, is the air quality report. Um, and as part of the board's condition of approval, it, it basically, I'm just going to read it so we're all clear. Um, it was, the condition was to ensure the health, safety and welfare of future residents of the Crossroads P U D residential development. The following conditions regarding air quality in relationship to the Cadillac asphalt plant be completed. There's three parts to this. First, that they complete air quality monitoring in multiple locations on site, on site, starting as soon as possible and completing upon the seasonal closing of the adjacent asphalt plant. Results of testing be provided to the township as part of the final P U D submission. That information has been provided. They did the test, um, they provided the report. When sent to Washtenaw County Health Department, the, they, um, you know, this is, I, I got some of this information third hand, but through an email that was shared with me, um, the outside agencies that were looking at the report determined that the, the testing that was completed wasn't for the correct uh, contaminants necessarily. V O Cs and particulate are of particular concern for the asphalt plant. So basically, the, through the health department, um, they said, they didn't review it because of the, the, the things that they would look for, were part of the monitor. So item B is that after monitoring is complete, appropriate outside agencies, including Washtenaw County Health Department, provide comment on the possible air quality impacts of the existing asphalt plant located on the east side of Wagner Road to the proposed Crossroads P U D development with regard to potential human health risks and objectionable orders. Because the, the particulate and the V O C wasn't part of the test, we dealt with, the, the outside agencies have not reviewed the information. And so then the third part hasn't been completed either, that the results of air quality monitoring, any outside agency review comments be provided as part of the P U D process. And so, um, last October, after we received the testing, um, I, um, forwarded these comments to Joe and, um, and Dan stating that, you know, the health department was looking for these other additional, um, testing, uh, parameters. Um, we haven't received any additional testing. It's my understanding that there, there not unlikely to be any additional testing that, that, I'll let Dan talk about that. Um, if that's the case, then we, as the township, need to ask then for our outside agencies to review the information that we have. Um, based on what I know, I, I, you know, it's inconclusive and so I can't, I can't provide any recommendation and I'm not an expert on, on air quality. So that's still hanging out there. And then, um, you know, basically all of my other, other outstanding items have been addressed. There are a couple of minor things, um, the planning commission would consider, um, prior to going to the board, um, like the, the, um, the close parking, I mean, there were seventy four spaces deficient, but there's a ton of shared parking. There's a ton of bicycle parking. There's other, hopefully we're having the busing, you know, there's, there's some other things. I'm not concerned about the, the parking. Um, there's a shared driveway easement with the funeral home that has to be reviewed. So all of the, um, additional items I have in my, my portion of the report can be, um, uh, approved or, or modified prior to, um, this item going to the board. So I don't know if you want to have Stacy give her presentation and then you can.
Yep.
Can I ask you just a one question of, uh? So if I'm reading your remarks correctly, for the B O T satisfaction, the issue of the air quality reporting and testing has not been done, but Crossroads believes they've done what they.
So test, the testing has been completed. They did, they did.
For the particular.
So they did A and when reviewed, it came back that they, that they, they didn't test for the particular V O C and particulate that would be most, of most concern.
Right.
So they did a test.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but, but the health department has not approved it and.
They haven't even, well, they haven't approved it. They haven't done a full review.
No, I understood. So as it's standing, the health department says these tests are not
inclusive.
Conclusive because they're not testing the right particulates, but as far as Crossroads is concerned, they're done with testing.
Well, I'll let them talk about that.
Can I ask what the date was that you went back to Crossroads and said what you said?
It was in October last year.
October, okay.
Asphalt plant is shut down. Well, they, they did their testing right before it shut down.
Shut down, yeah.
Let me, may I just say a few things here? Because I think there's a, there's a real jump, jump over. Pardon?
Nothing. I know we have another consultant to hear from, but.
Where was I, you know? But I'd like to finish this because we were instructed by the board and this is what it was air quality, uh, monitoring, objectional, objectionable orders, objectionable orders, concerns about orders regarding orders. It was through the whole thing. I then took that and went to a professional group that did, that was going to do the testing and I told them this is what was requested specifically. And they then did a test, T E K. And this, they said, this is what they're going to do. I then did an email that I sent to Will and to planner at the time.
I don't know that he got that. The email I received that was forwarded, that was in your packet, was to Mark Thompson and.
It was to Doug and Will. And I said, this, this is what the agreement brothers of the states, this is what we're going to test for. And I sent it to him. He says, fine. That's what we tested for.
You get an email back?
No, I don't have an email back from him. Okay, but the email was sent to them on October eighteenth at nine eight, nine oh eight A M, twenty twenty two. So we tested for that. What they're requesting testing for, I have here. We went through everything. The only one that, it, this is like asking for a problem, a, a solution where there is no problem. There's no problem. The testing that's being done is done by the state and federal agencies to allow these places to even the function. And they're tested up the, up, and here's, here's an email. This is a letter from an attorney who they well respected air attorney. This is all he does. And as it states in there, his qualifications are that twenty years, twenty, twenty years specialized in air, chair of the air committee for the environmental law section of the state bar of Michigan, a member of the state of Michigan's air advisory committee, advises clients here to cor- co- uh, courts coast to coast just on air. And what he says is that you've done more than anyone would ever do. This is, the state regulates this issue. This is a state regulated issue. And they have went through all the, all the reports. There's no problem with this. There's none. There never was a problem. Before it was requested, I actually got a report from the state for sta- stating that they've tested it. There's no problems with this. And I gave that to the people who are requesting these reports. I said, it shows there's no, there's no problem. Why do we have to do this? We spent tens of thousands of dollars on, on reviews and reports and time. And it's, and it's to no end. There's nothing to it. There's no problem.
Did you get data, sir?
I'm sorry.
Did you get any of the data in the reports? I mean, does that include?
Well, for the, for the T E K testing, they, 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 they tested for, they specifically said what they were testing for.
Does that qualify as testing, you know, results if you have the state?
Testing that they're talking about doing is done by the state in conjunction with the, the, uh, facility itself.
That's what I'm saying. If you have that.
Oh, I have a report. It's, it's in the, it's in the package that I've sent to Laura, as a matter of fact.
The state's data is.
I, I've seen it all. It is not on, it's not in your packet, but yeah, I mean, what, what he submitted was, was was sent to the health department because they're, they're the expert, not, not me, not Stacy, not. So, and from, I'm telling you what, they didn't even do a report because they said.
Laura, no, he's talking about some different data.
No, that's the data we're talking.
State's data.
Oh, the state did. That's the Eagle permit he's talking about.
That's the, well.
Eagle controls the, the facility. Yes, that's right.
And I asked if they had data in it.
Yeah, it, it says there's no problem.
Testing of the asphalt.
Yes.
So if you had data that the state tests for, but it didn't come from what you asked for, um, maybe we could substitute the state's data.
But you see, there's, there's, the state regulates these higher degree than the federal government does. That's the information I came. They, they, they cannot even go past their property line with any particulates. If it is, they're shut down. That's why I said we're, we're, we're dealing with a problem where there's no problem.
So the other reports and other, other, other public reports or FOIA of all reports and or data that would assuage some of the concerns of the commissioners.
Eagle will tell you that they've tested it and if there's any particulates that extend beyond the property line, the facility gets carted, shall we say, and then they're shut down if they don't correct it.
I didn't ask what Eagle will tell me. I asked if there are public reports and FOIA of all data.
There are public reports saying that the facility is accepted. There are public reports saying that.
Daniel, let me call you again.
Mm-hmm.
I hear what you're saying, sir. But Gelman, you're talking to a township. That Gelman had an industry, Gelman was operated by, was looked at by the county, was looked at by the state and we're left with a fricking mess of our underground water. So I feel what you're saying. I understand what you're saying to us. You don't have to say it.
All, all I can, all I can say is that this is outside of a one developer's hand. This is a state issue and they're the ones who control it. And we, we are not ones to, we have tested for what was requested to be tested for, which is odors.
And I appreciate the bait switch claim that you're not making outright, but insinuating. You know, you, you ask us to check for odors, we check for odors. Now you want this. So I can, I appreciate that perspective if that's what you're positing. But I, you know, I guess it might be something that this commission wants irrespective or outside of what you're providing so that we can make, I mean, we're going to put residents here, a lot of residents and we need residents, we need density, but we're going to put, uh, you know, we're going to have a dense development right across the street from an asphalt plant and we, I think this commission wants to do its due diligence to make sure that it's not going to be problematic. And is there any way of getting that data so that we can, uh?
You have housing with, as, as points out in this letter I gave you, the housing to the other side of, to the west, which is where the prevalent winds roll flow. You have hundreds of housing units.
I don't know, but Walbert, you, Walbert Heights.
This, the, the township did its own environmental report before it brought that land. Okay? It, 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 all of this has been done. You're creating an issue where there isn't one because it's regulated by others.
Well, I kind of, I'm just saying this, I'll be brief. I'm kind of feeling like this is a bored, a B O T issue. Not that it's not something that we deal with because we do, but I, I, there's some specificity on what they wanted, according to Daniel.
Yeah.
There's, uh, the, the background that Laura gave us, we're kind of coming to the table late on this particular, you know, this, I mean, we did discuss the asphalt and the odor in our earlier.
Air monitoring.
Yeah, and air monitoring.
Recommend.
But in terms of the particulates of what the, the health department wanted, um, I'm feeling like this has kind of gotten grown since the project has been with us. And so I don't know, and I'll throw this out here, if people are comfortable with approving the project with the condition that these things are met to the satisfaction of the board.
Joe has a suggestion, which I think is.
I think it runs, runs along with yours is, let's, Joe, we can move this to the board, but what we'll do is we'll ask for those reports that you're looking for and get those to the board members so that they have that information. Laura, you guys have the information as well. Whatever we can FOIA from the state information lies.
Well, what I'll do is I'll go to the attorney that I work with who works with them.
Yeah.
And I said, you, get, get everything you need to make a presentation to the board that clarifies what is, what's here and what's not here. Because I, I, I feel like we're, we're chasing a mirage here is what I feel like, because every time I turn around, I'm told this is regulated and there's no problem because it doesn't go beyond the boundary. So let's get the state involved with it at the board level and they can present it.
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, I'd like to, there are a couple of things here that I, I, number one, I think it is, um, it, we're in a situation where this asphalt plant would.
it, we're in a situation where this asphalt plant would would not be put in its current location. The township, the city has grown up a around the asphalt. One thing that Eagle will tell you is, yes, I think the last inspection they did was like twenty nineteen of this of this facility. Um, and I'm not sure what monitoring the facility does. I'm pretty sure they're required to do some monitoring and that should, they probably provide that. Um, they they also want to be good neighbors. However, Eagle will say that the um, it is complaint based. Okay, and and if we, if I go back to um, why we talked about air monitoring, it was not just establishing the a baseline that, yeah, it it's good. It was some ongoing monitoring. And maybe this is also a part of a community benefit because you need data to give Eagle to make a complaint. So particulates. All right, i- i- you know, if they're not doing a good job on, you know, the truck traffic, the all that stuff, there will be particulates and that's very bad for asthma. Okay, and then the and uh, odors, it's very hard to detect odors. However, if if there's a monitoring and a a an avenue for complaints for these residents, then Eagle will go in and say, you know what, you gotta do something about these odors. You you add equipment, you extend in your stacks or et cetera. So I think part of what I was hoping is we could establish a reasonable ba- baseline that, yes, they're doing their job and provide some ongoing monitoring that would be part of a public benefit for the residents here, but also for some of the residents that have grown up around um, this.
Monitor, you should monitor to the west, which is where prevailing winds are. That 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 is where if you're gonna have any problems, that's where it's gonna show up.
Well, except we had people.
We live there and they have it.
Basically, in the my H Q that said they had been bothered by odor odors, especially when there was an emergency, because that's a a lower area. And they had detected that. So I think I think the, I'm not trying to create a problem. I'm actually trying to say if we can monitor and one, it would be great for the residents too, but it would also help us make sure that that asphalt plant was operating in the cleanest fashion it could. So uh, that's kind of where where I'm in with it. And I agree with you. I think we should talk to the help, get the health department, get the Eagle guy who does the inspections, talk about this and what sort of monitoring could be. You know, I I'd rather see, you know, the the bus stops are great, but A A T A is not gonna do that. It's not in their plan currently. And we're going forward with a millage that supports their current plan. And but the health and safety of, uh, you know, ongoing development in this area, we have a school too, you know, maybe there's a way that, you know, of a group of people could, you know, support that air monitoring and this, it could be a part of the community benefit package. I'm just trying to.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. I I, all I'm saying is that it is everything I've run into is that there isn't a problem. Everything. Okay?
Anecdotally, I have friends who live further west that have told me, I know you're reviewing this, I can smell that plant. Boy, it's bad. So it all depends on who you talk to and and what day of the week it is.
And what I'm a little bit concerned is, I mean, ever since I've been on the planning commission, it's been drilled that the board wants us to work through all these details before it comes to them. Now I'm hearing it, no, this is a board.
You were right.
Yeah, I I know I'm not going crazy.
Well, you are, but not.
I'm getting old, that's for sure. And now I'm hearing, well, maybe now that's not really the golden rule anymore. And and I'm I, you know, I'm fine with that. I just want to know which one is it? Want us to work through the details or you want to handle some details yourself?
I think they do want you to work through the details of the plan itself. But for like development agreements, community benefits, they want you to, they want you to discuss it, but they get the final say. And I think, I think.
Always, always.
But I think, I think the the conversations had been, had been moving, moving differently for for development agreements and community ben- benefits specifically before. So my conversation specifically was for community benefits when I was like, well, that's at the board.
Well, we've been pushing the board to make some decisions.
Yeah, I know, and I know, I know that. Um, but you know, I think you made a good point. Because I mentioned this earlier today in speaking with Mariah Joyce and um, the clerk, um, when this came up, that, you know, this technically was a board condition. And so while the planning commission should talk about it and provide some input, you know, the board is gonna have the final, the final say on on if, you know, I would hate for you to say, Dan, the planning commission, we're asking you to do X, Y, Z to meet the board's condition. And you do those things and you get to the board and they're like, well, that's not really, that's not what we thought or, you know, or do this X, Y, do A, B, C. So that's my concern that, you know, you're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here. So while I think you could give further clarification to help the board or to um, maybe get more information to the board as far as the study. I think they're, they are gonna have to determine whether you've, you, you know, Dan and his group team have met the A and B and C of that condition, right? So.
I think Jan's suggestion as far as if you wanted to do monitoring, it's, I think it's a fairly expensive endeavor, which is why the state has easily controls it. But uh, to do away with the A A T A sort of thing and sort of put money into a long-term monitoring of this, so the plant would be monitored over time from the site. That would be something that we would, I don't have an aversion to it. I'm just saying, I haven't seen any problem. There is a smell occasionally. I mean, I've been on this site for four years now and every once in a while you you smell it or even if you drive down Wagner, most especially. Often times when it gets down with us, it sort of go, it must go over us because I don't get it that much in in the project itself, development itself. But that is a, uh, if if you wanted to do a resolution that suggests as part of a community benefit of a of monitoring, we would certainly look into that and and look to see how that would work because I don't know. Okay, I don't have enough information. I, as I said, every time I've turned around, I've come up against this wall and said, the state takes care of this. And and they're the ones who do the monitoring.
Do they do monitoring or do they shed complaints when they come back?
They do both. They they, when they checked the facility that that nineteen, South nineteen, which was when we started this in twenty one, was was relatively recent, but time has passed, et cetera, of course. That, they did, they did monitoring it. They went and checked it out. They look at all the facility and they do determination.
Yeah, I really want this site, I really want this project to work. I like the benefits. I like the density. I I I like, I I I like the idea. I really want it to work. But I also want to have the, to know that it's not gonna be a nuisance is maybe too strong a word. It's not gonna be hell hazard. There's not gonna be olfactory situations, conditions that, I mean, so I and 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 I'm torn between whether it's a function of this planning commission to vet these or to dump it out of the trustees' laps and say, here you go. You know?
I want a lot too, but I just don't know. I'm getting mixed messages from the B O T.
I think it's the latter. Because if we take a step back and say, if this project doesn't go forward, Cadillac is still there. We've been bitten once, hard. Yeah, well, yes. We should be knowing what an industrial complex in this town's doing to the air, whether it's, whether it's crossroads or not. So so what's ultimately the plan? And I think that gets back to the board.
Or a fire department.
Well, potentially, it's Mariah of what's legal, what are its Cadillac legally required to do at what time period? And how does the township get a hold of those records?
Well, I think it's a little bit more, it's a little bit more than that. In in my mind, it is my understanding of the complaint based is at least, you know, if there aren't any issues, you know, the state is and it's complaint based, we have the data, we have the data that then the state can act on.
All I'm saying is we don't know if it's complaint based, if it's regulatory based or whatever.
It's both.
Mariah should be able to find that out pretty quickly and what is on record. Because as a township, we should know regardless of this development.
And 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 Eagle even said, it's the, if if it's gonna be anything that bothers people, it's the
They kept that in a letter and a pronouncement?
This was a com- this was a conversation I had with the guy who did the inspections. Okay, I know, it's third party, but it was particular matter. And it was odor. And both of those need to be complaint based. And.
Did you, did anyone complain?
No, he, they have no record of complaints. And that's why they say they have a clean record. Yeah, and this would uh, provide data in a way, a mechanism for the residents to complain if there was an issue. And then Eagle would have to act on.
So all this stuff that I read that came out of the health department said this is a regulatory function of the state. It always ca- it always came back to that. It doesn't say it's a developer's function. It's a regulatory function of the state. And 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 I'm not sure how far you can, we did what we were asked to do. Okay, and here we are now, still talking about the same thing.
Can I, yeah, go ahead. Bob, I just want to understand what you're recommending.
My recommendation is.
Is that we handle it or we send it to?
My my recommendation is as a township, we've got Cadillac. They're producing something. We should know what the regulatory requirements and the complaint requirements are for a facility like Cadillac. And if there are any actual complaints, regulatory tests or whatever, those should be supplied to the township beyond the state so that we have them. Because again, we've been bitten. We shouldn't get bitten again.
I would move that the board trustees answer to the agenda, Mariah, to discuss this.
This, this is what I have from Eagle. They require sophisticated air dispersion modeling for minor sources. Michigan applies major modeling requirements to minor sources, and this is a minor source, which confirms that the public is not exposed to unsafe air from the regulated facility. It regulates air toxins in a state-only program that addresses potential health risks posed by hundreds of compounds. It does not issue an air permit unless the facility demonstrates that potential emissions will not threaten public receptors as a property fence line and beyond, i.e. the adverse health impacts demonstrated with inadequate margins of safety. Actual emissions are almost always less than potential emissions. This is from Eagle. Okay?
But they also have a permit to
They're permitted facilities and and
Exactly.
It permits, what I, what these attorneys told me that they're permitted facilities are so stringent that places are leaving Michigan and going to Ohio and Indiana because they're they're they're, they're able to do different things down there that they're not able to do in Michigan. That's how stringent. That's how stringent Michigan is though.
Well, that's good.
Michigan is actually more stringent than the federal government is on emissions. Okay, so and now the SIO township is even more stringent than the than the state. I mean, where does it end, folks?
It it ends with drinking water and breathing.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. Absolutely.
It, so where are we, folks? Um, did you want Stacy to write any input?
What's up?
Oh, yeah, Stacy.
Maybe she's got the answer.
Yeah.
That's okay. I did not have the answer. Um, our review is pretty brief. Uh, we recommended approval in our letter from May thirtieth. We had two outstanding comments. One of them, I'm sure you've seen before, it's a pretty standard comment in our P U D letters that just refers to the township on the public benefits negotiation. And the other is regarding the drainage district. There's an existing one on site that the applicant is proposing to abandon. I believe this process is underway and therefore we are requiring a stormwater maintenance agreement in place of that um, drainage district. So that will be submitted for review um, before this goes to the board, hopefully. And then we are also recommending that the board approve a hundred and thirty-nine additional R E Us for a total R E U amount of one hundred and seventy-seven. There was thirty-eight that were previously approved with the office plans submitted. Um, other than that, we didn't have any other concerns and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Stormwater maintenance agreement. It's actually already been submitted to the township. Stacy, I don't know if you've gotten it yet, but we submitted it last week.
I did not receive it, uh, but I'm sure I will get it shortly.
In your box.
Then I will get it tomorrow. Thank you. I mean, there is, there, yeah, you're writing down something.
So I mean, s- s- so I I.
I saw a lot of no's when I was proposing a motion to approve and leaving it to the B O T.
I will say.
Somebody else take a stab at it. That's okay, just wait soon.
I I I will say that one of the things that we're required to look at under the section thirty-six dash two forty-five is uses permitted, um, any land use as authorized may be included in a P U D subject to the adequate protection of public health, safety and welfare. So 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 we've got a, you know, it's thirty-six dash two forty-five be a print too. So if I'm gonna prove this tonight, I would want there to be a provision whereby the developer address all issues related to the impact of the Cadillac asphalt uh, plant as they relate to the adequate protection of the public health, safety and welfare. So I I would want that to be part of it. So the board knows that we we talked about it, it concerned us, and that they gotta bring it back having addressed that.
There were three things that we've talked about tonight that I think could be specified as addressing that issue. And that would be getting the test data and the compounds that they tested for so that we can see that what they're looking at, what they found, and propose that monitoring equipment be set up, but get Eagle to to speak to whether that, setting up that monitoring will help them regulate.
Is the we, the P C, or is the we the township through the board?
We is, we recommend that this be done and the board then would, if if they agreed with us, they would. They would also specify that.
They're gonna have, they're gonna share our concerns, I guarantee you.
So we're making a proposal to the board that this be addressed prior to them approving.
Well, they won't approve it. I I I I don't speak for that, but I can't. This is gonna, this is gonna come up with the board. This is gonna be a board issue.
Yep, it will be.
Because it already was.
So we need to offer them a solution. And Jan is is proposing, or Jan has talked about a solution being air quality monitoring be set up so that we can see a path to complaint to Eagle about what's happening and then let them address it. If they tell us that this monitoring will allow them to take action, that seems to be a a feedback mechanism that.
I I guess I'll take a different stab at you, the same direction you're going. Here's, here's my concern on that. How long do we have to have the equipment set up for? Does it find anything, does it not? It's not fair to this gentleman.
I don't need to pull this up.
But but, well, I I probably would be going hard before the course to find out something two months from now we should resolve it, but.
If Eagle says that they can uh, do something about it, given data, then we.
Let let me try wording, wording a question this way to everyone. And I I don't know, Mr. Kettler, if you want to respond to it or not. If the board and the township collectively could specifically delineate exactly what they want, and it was cost effective, I suppose, because there's also that question, would you be amenable to it?
If they would delineate what they, what they require.
Specifically what they want for testing. I know you already unfortunately went through this. Specifically what they want for testing, I know you already unfortunately went through this once and. I've developed a building in this township, so I've, I've actually been through the planning commission and had some. Interesting experiences. Uh. So I, I've said in your shoes, not the same issue, but different issues.
I think the way, I think.
Try to come up with a solution that works for her.
I think the, that idea of, uh, if there's a way that. Eagle has that would set up monitoring for a long term.
Yeah.
Right? And, uh, if that would assist them, if, if it's, I, I don't know the procedure, I don't even know the cost effectiveness of it. I don't know the benefit of it, I don't know anything. Um, but, uh, I think that, uh, we know people who would be able to figure that out, right? And again, I think we're chasing a problem that doesn't exist, but it, it, it looks like. Because what happens if there is a problem? The state will either make them fix it or shut them down. Yes, you're thinking, because they've done it. That's what they do.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you're right about certain. Um, hazardous materials, okay? And I think they're, but. They're allowed to do certain emissions. And Eagle is, and the whole permit is based on those emissions being high enough in the atmosphere. That they do not affect the, the lower atmosphere. And what I think would be, and, and I don't claim to understand. This whole thing, but it sounds like. It's the township. You, Eagle and the envi- Washington County Environmental Health that has to get together. And, and, and really understand, okay, what does Eagle test for? What are the, what are the issues that we are concerned about, why do they not want residential development next to asphalt plants? Okay, I, I mean, people say that, why, we, you know, you don't want residents, wouldn't. It, today, we would not put this plant here, okay? So, let's understand it and then figure out if there is some sort of. Monitoring that would help any complaint based, which would help more than just the folks in this.
And I, and I, I agree.
Can I bring up a, a more mundane?
Please.
Point with. On page five of Laura's, uh, memo. Um, it talks about, um. Uh, deviations that's known for speaking. And I don't know, I remember us, uh, a while ago talking about the Liberty DVA community, one of this.
Oh, the F.
Yeah, and are people comfortable with those deviation requir- uh, requests?
And it, and also.
Cause I don't wanna spend all this time on this one thing.
If we're, if we're not.
And then when that gets resolved, they come back and they say, well, you know, I don't like this inch here and this foot there, so.
Yeah, I, and, and the reason I'm comfortable with it is the way that they're treating the distance between the street and the buildings. And also those buildings are, are creating a buffer that protects and creates that inner court. So I think there's a definitely a, a positive that comes out of that, I'd rather exchange that space for the interiors.
And that's, and that's a rationale for each of these requ- what requested.
That's what a lot of them are.
I'm comfortable with it too.
And I, I'll go over the quick head list of questions I have, this stuff shouldn't take very long, but stuff I wanna ask. Is the true radius for emergency vehicles, especially near some of these buildings, is that clear and. There's enough room for vehicles to get around in there? So I'm looking at some of these renderings, I'm looking at some of these. Trees and I'm looking.
Stacy probably can answer that better than I, but they, yeah, through the fire department and the engineer, they vetted all of that.
Fire said no problems.
Yeah, I, I just saw that, I was concerned. Um, as far as the sidewalk pathway situation for what I guess is going. Cross, crossroads is ultimately going to construct this concrete sidewalk, is that correct? Are all those easements from all those other properties already secured? Sure it'll be required, right?
It's, it's not an easement.
Probably, it's probably right.
Right away.
Oh, that's sixty-six foot right away.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you guys are good.
It's, it's just a, a grading nightmare, so.
It's a grading nightmare, that's why I said.
I'm thinking there's a brick store right there.
Well, that's an interesting, that's an interesting.
Go ahead.
Uh, just looking at the grade, like you said, on Wager Road, ultimately the water and sewer mains are along Liberty. And maybe I read the grade wrong, but you don't need to pump any sewage up, you'd be natural grade. Right, yes, okay, cool, thank you guys.
Mr. Hyde.
I only have one other mundane question, that had to do with the trash and recycling. Um, and, and where, where on the property do you have trash and recycle? I, I just.
I'll let him.
David has done a, a complete analysis of this.
Okay, so. There is a trash and recycle here.
Where, we go to.
That, that.
Oh, you circled it, nice.
There. And near the circle that I can't figure out how to delete, there.
Those are bins, you're saying, oh, dumpster.
I don't, and recycle within an enclosure in each of those locations. And then these podium buildings have its own internal system in here.
Is that externally accessible by, for the truck to pick them up? I couldn't tell.
Well, put it back in.
How do they get in?
And sure, here's what we found. And I've been a developer's architect for decades now. And trash always comes up because they're always kind of, well, you know, let's just plop one over here on the site, let's plop one here and there was never any science to it until we have a problem. And then what we did is rewound through the developments we did and said, where does the problem start? And what we found is when you have a one or two-story building. A tenant is willing to travel up to five hundred feet and you don't have a problem. As soon as you go to three stories, it changes drastically, it gets cut down to two hundred and fifty feet. When you go to a podium building, there's something about a podium building psychologically, because there's parking underneath it. That it's almost as if they assume it's like a hotel where they're just kind of putting their. Dishes outside the door and they want the landlord to come pick it up. So what we ended up doing is we started employing the five hundred foot radius to try and capture anybody using the dumpster enclosures that are out on the site. Or two hundred and fifty feet, if you have a three story, we have two stories here, we're serving. Um, and any of these podium buildings. We have decided that we put trash chutes that go through them. The trash chute, it's got a, a chute compactor. So you drop it down, it gets to a point where they compact it into a unit, they have wheels on them, we have, uh, other trash units on the ready. So when two of them get full. What they do is they roll them out through the podium building and there's a pickup at the end of the building.
They?
Uh, they, the onsite staff.
Okay, so, so you staff that.
Yeah, because, based on the spread.
Managed.
Yeah, based on the spreadsheet that we put together, that we've developed over the years. This project. The. Facilities that are out on the site, the two that I, I said circle prior. Um. It'll take nine days to ref- to fill the two recycle bins, it'll take four days to fill the trash bins. So you're hitting the recycles one day a week and you're hitting the trash twice a week.
Sure, the lower.
And the goal would be to first that.
And I, I think this will visually give you an, an understanding of what. Is going on is that these are. Compactions, a compaction in the podium building and they're on rollers. Or they actually, they put lifts under them, lift them up and then cycle them out and then a truck comes and picks them up.
The bay that I didn't know about, I was trying to see how the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Truck was gonna.
These are all, these are all managed. So you have a staff that are, that manage all of this process.
Great answer, great answer.
So that yellow is that.
Yeah, and I couldn't see how the trash.
There's a trash that comes right down, it goes right into it, so if you're on third floor, you drop it in. Goes into it, compacts it. Then the staff will take it out, roll it up, rolls it out. And which side does it go, obviously that, the outside there.
There's an overhead door on the room, but that's what we do is we set them here and they come and pick them up.
Yep.
And they go back in.
And when you set it out there, is that in the dumpster?
There's, it's managed so that they come when they, at certain dates, right? Certain, certain days and then they're, they're there.
Then a recycle truck comes in and picks it up, it's already on the outside.
Yes.
So we set them up based on the number of tenants.
Covered, I mean, an enclosure that they put them in so that it's not unsightly?
Not, uh, they're not, the idea is it's not out for a long time, yeah, it's the same day.
It's put on schedule, right, because the podium buildings. Are set up so the capacity is every four days. They're doing recycle and every four days they're doing trash, cause they're filling up two compacted bins for the trash. So they're on the same schedule with the site.
Very closed bins.
Right.
Okay. They're not open bins.
Oh.
We will have a composting facility next door.
So can I, can I, can I? And it's getting close to eleven, um, we're either gonna table it or we're gonna approve it with conditions or we're gonna deny it. Um.
Thank you for moving us along.
I, I, I mean, so can we get to it, whatever that's gonna be?
I'm inclined personally to approve it with conditions if we. If we can word it so that I can agree with it.
And who, and, and the conditions that I would propose if, if that's the case. Is that the developer address all issues related to any impact of Cadillac asphalt as it relate to the. Adequate protection of the public health, safety and welfare. And secondly, that the developer acquire and provide all available data from Eagle regarding complaints, testing. Um, or reports related to Cadillac asphalt. I'd be willing to do that and just to get us started, but I'm not, I haven't made a motion.
I'd like to add another one to that, that would be what Jan was talking about where we have a meeting set up between. Township representatives. Uh, the developers' representatives and Eagle and the Washington County, what is that?
Environmental Health Department.
If we're doing that, sure, just table it.
Do we require that that be?
Cause the help, Washington County can.
I think you should just do what you said and let the board deal with how it's done.
Everyone should be careful.
I, I think the board needs to get their condition fulfilled. That would be my play, play thing before I can make a decision on the project. They got, they got step one done, step two, three are simple.
You, you, essentially you've approved everything on this project except the unknown. Which has to do with the asphalt plant. So I think you should, the unknown needs to be dealt with in a whole separate way, but the project itself. Is fully approvable. There's nothing wrong with it, it's a lovely project.
So, I.
All.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, uh, um, I could, uh. Vote for a motion that would approve with conditions as stated by you guys. Because I'm not sure, I'm confused about, you know, how much we should be.
Our role.
Our role in this part that was mandated by the board or so.
It was the board's condition, the, the board imposed this condition, so it'll be up to the board to.
Well, we brought it up.
We talked about initially.
No, no.
We brought it up.
I, I agree.
But we didn't.
They delineated what they wanted.
Right, but now we have this, the, the, yeah, so that's where I'm at.
It, it was a condition that preceded my involvement on the board, but it's, it was nonetheless a board condition imposed by the board. And it's up to them, it's, it's up to the board to ferret it out.
I think that's, I think that's why I should go.
You're perfectly.
I was talking to him, not you, but thank you.
I know, I know, and I was, and I was thinking out loud. Whether, no matter what our action is, it's going to the board and they're gonna hear either our reasons for rejecting it. The reasons for putting it on hold or our reasons for approving, you know, our conditions for.
Conditions.
So, they're gonna see those and I just want them to see what we feel are the important.
Well, mine would, you know, I, 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 mine, I read my two and it, and. You know, this, this, whatever motion is a function of his body as, as, as we add to it.
And, and I think they, I, I think, I don't wanna specifically say that you have to meet with A, B and C. I wanna say, taking into account our discussion this evening. And, you know, and, and I do think it needs to be, yeah. And so I think if you can add to that, just.
Write it down, Jan, is your idea?
Well, let's get there.
I'm not opposed to.
No, I just said, take into a, account our, our, our discussions this evening regarding, um. Uh. Establishing a baseline and monitoring for community benefit. I mean. As a part of.
I mean, what does Andrea and Bob think?
Yeah.
You vote?
Do you guys think we should do what the?
I, yeah.
Laura, didn't you say the city attorney was writing something up about this?
Um, I don't know, well, we've talked about it several times, we, she hasn't, I don't think been specifically directed. But that will all, that's all gonna be part of.
Part of that process, okay.
Yes, it's broad enough.
I, I, my perspective is, gets back to the same thing we talked about with the church. We're not experts. We don't know what the requirements are. Regulatory, we don't know the complaints, we don't know what the data is. To try to figure out and put together wording saying this is what we want, but we're not. When the board made the mistake in twenty twenty-two. Apparently, that. We want odors and whatever and it doesn't sound like they got an expert opinion before they submitted to the developer what they wanted. My perspective is, I'm for this. As long as the board gets the answer that they want to meet the condition they put in it. And I agree with the condition, I just don't know what the answer is.
Yeah. Andrea?
The thing right here in the front of my brain is, what are the kids doing here? Is there a playground?
Huh?
Is there a playground that's totally?
No, we're, the demographic we think is gonna be in the twenty-five to thirty-five age group, up to about forty. So we don't think there'll be many children here.
And they remove the three bedrooms.
We, we, we have, we have studios, one bedrooms and two bed, units.
Families won't be really looking at this place.
There's a lot of family homes in this township. What there's not is places for other people. So we're trying to create a, a, a place for that.
I'm, something that's struck me in the program, like the off base, man, looking at this letter. Um, and it talks all about. How those places are regulated, all the Clean Air Act, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't say. How often, when, is it just feeling driven? Uh, then going through here a few times now. It's, um. You know, it, this, this Cadillac one has received, you know, exemplary. Ratings, but I, I would love to know when, so when somebody's saying, yeah, we want more data to know exactly. Because I'm thinking about like meatpacking companies, sure, there are all kinds of rules. But the federal government is strapped. And they don't have inspectors. And things fall through the cracks, I would like that data. I wanna know when they were inspected.
And then that's what, that's what the township, the, the board should do then, because. You know, we could go around in circles on this for the next three days, but I think that that's. I mean, he laid out in this letter that there's been, there's been no reports. That each of the three Eagle AQD inspections show full compliance based upon the facility compliance evaluation and stack activity reports. Now, what dates are they, I don't know, that's what you're asking.
If I was, you're very smart, you know about. The process for making a complaint.
No, no.
You know. I mean, this is an opportunity and, yeah, I, but I think it also. Rests with the board, I mean.
It does, but we should bring it up and put it on their plate so they can see it laying there.
Yeah.
I think.
Commissioner Arizer can handle that.
Okay, so.
This is, this is topic number one, this comes up on the board, I guarantee you.
Yeah, so.
How we go forward?
We go forward either with, either we get it. Either we table it and we wait for the information or we say. This is a, and, and this is a, we recommend approval of the project with this condition. And those are our choices and it really doesn't, it, it. It, it gets it there faster to get resolved if we actually.
With conditions.
Approve it with the condition. And, and points to them as saying that this is what needs resolution.
I, I think that's the proper procedure to.
Honestly.
The board imposes it on us and it needs to be resolved by them.
Yeah, before you reject it, but, but.
We put it on hold.
We don't, yeah, and I don't wanna, the project is a really good project.
Are we coalescing around an approach?
It sounds like, yeah, and, and it's, I mean, a person can still, it doesn't have to be a unanimous. But I think we can vote with the conditions. Okay? So a motion.
Ready? I'm being with you to make a motion.
Yes.
Based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the final PUD meets the criteria contained in section thirty-six dash two forty-nine I, planning commission review and recommendation, final PUD plan and rezoning, and therefore recommends to the township board to approve the final crossroads, final PUD subject to the conditions below. In making this determination, the planning commission has reviewed each of the applicable sections of the ordinance, including section thirty-six dash two forty-five, the general provisions, thirty-six dash two forty-six, the design considerations, thirty-six dash two forty-seven, the project densities, thirty-six dash two forty-eight, the design standards, thirty-six dash two fifty, resolution of ambiguities and chapter deviations, and thirty-six dash two fifty-two, phasing of commencement of construction. The approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the concerns noted in the township planners' reviews dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four will be addressed. Two, the concerns noted in the engineers' review dated May nineteen, twenty twenty four, four and twenty, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four will be addressed. Three, that the developer address all issues related to any impact of Cadillac asphalt as it relate to the adequate protection of the public's health, safety and welfare as set for in section thirty-six dash two forty-five of the SiO Township zoning ordinance. And four, that the developer acquire and provide all available data from Eagle regarding Cadillac asphalt, whether complaints, comma, testing, comma, or reports, period.
I have reports and there are reports.
Well, data from Eagle regarding complaints, testing, and reports.
Testing, right?
Yeah, complaints, testing, and reports is the, the three that I want in the right sentence order at eleven o'clock. And then, that, those are the four that I have, and then to the extent others have, I open a preliminary amendments.
We can make a suggestion that the board could evaluate, I, I'm gonna word it here, I'm just gonna state it, and then we can figure out how to word it. The board determine what Eagle's recommendations would be to provide monit, air quality monitoring so that they can take action when necessary. We need to get with Eagle, we need to find out what they actually would need to take action, so.
So that maybe the final consideration of the PUD shall be based on input from Eagle regarding, or something like that, or no?
What they would, what they would require for air quality monitoring so that they can, or no, I, we don't even need to say that. What do they require so that, that we can provide as part of this on an ongoing basis? Are we making this a condition upon the applicant?
I think.
No, this is the, a condition that the board should take into account when they're making their determination, whether to approve it or not.
So do we wanna say something like the applicant shall provide the board information regarding this, so that they, they, they have, that he, they have to tell the board?
That would be a way to do it.
Then we'd be letting a third party tell the board what Eagle needs.
I don't really wanna.
No, I appreciate that, I just don't want, I just don't want that to be left out.
So, can I just interject something? We're assuming that Eagle is gonna give a damn.
We're gonna amend this.
And I, I heard what you said, Jan. Right now, we know that the county health department gives a damn to the extent that they didn't get the right particulates evaluated. So I, I do think that the motion should say, pursue it to the board trust, BOT's condition of having blah, 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 blah done. So they understand where this is coming from, where our recommendations are coming, our conditions are coming from. Does that make sense? Like, so approve the final PUD, blah, 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 with conditions of developer address the Cadillac asphalt plant concerns of safety as outlined by the board PUD, preliminary PUD approval. So that the board understands why we're, what we're grappling with here. This is something we came up with, this is something we're.
They'll get it, they'll understand.
Okay, okay, I was really trying to come up with a way that the board could feel that on an ongoing basis, this will be taken care of, and that in the future, when problems come up, they have a means of giving it back to the permit holder, which, is that the county or is that the state?
The, the permit holder is Cadillac asphalt.
Oh, yes, and who's the permit issuer?
Eagle.
So it is the state, so.
It's just, the question is, is how much do they, how much?
How, how about a condition that the, that the petitioner and the township? It's getting too late.
Where are you going?
Well, I'm trying to say.
The two entities.
Consult with the, with Eagle and the environmental health to see if there's an ongoing monitoring process that could be achieved.
Here we go. So you, so condition number five, that the applicant or petitioner, um, did you say?
And the township.
The petitioner township.
Consult with Washington County Environmental Health and Michigan for, for Eagle regarding.
To, to determine if there's an ongoing monitoring process that would ensure, that would.
For sure, for sure, public health.
That would ensure public health.
Are we just talking about particulates, or just talking about order, or both?
Cross the board.
Cross the board.
They're gonna know, that's their business.
And that's why Eagle and the county, cause they're not on the same page, right? That we know of, so we wanna get everybody on the same page, the petitioner, the township, Eagle, and county health.
Who is the secretary that has to write all this down, Bob? Is that you? My apologies, did you?
Do you have a transcript? Um, process to?
Yeah.
So Bob doesn't have it right now.
Yeah, they'll, they'll type it out.
Well, and what were you?
So that conditions as noted in the meeting, for the minutes of the meeting. Given how this is, how late it is and how we've wandered a little bit.
So I think, yeah, your two conditions plus that the petitioner township consult with Eagle and the Washington County Environmental Health.
Ongoing monitoring process to ensure public health.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, do you wanna read? I think, I think I've got them.
Good.
Oh, you want, great, thank you.
So, number one was concerns noted in the township planners' reviews, and John provided a couple of dates that I didn't exactly catch, but. And then number two was concerns noted in engineers' review dated certain dates.
Yeah, I think that's me.
Three, any impact of Cadillac asphalt.
The developer address all issues related to any impact of Cadillac asphalt as it relate to the adequate protection of the public health, safety and welfare.
Based on section thirty-six, two four five.
Yep.
Four, acquire and provide all applicable Eagle testing, complaint, and reports, the developer.
Related to, related to Cadillac asphalt.
Yes. Five, petitioner and township consult with Eagle and develop, um, the health department. Yeah. Achieve ongoing monitoring process to ensure public health.
Um, do you wanna say achieve or investigate? It may not be achievable, we don't know.
That was your, what you said.
Second.
ascertain, monitor.
Okay.
Okay.
Board, yay.
All right. More, and.
I got a motion table.
And, and, and.
Well, I thought, yes, I would, I thought.
Commissioner Reiser made the initial motion. Commissioner Moore.
For a second, okay, further discussion, okay, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Reiser.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Walsh, yes, Rockney.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yeah.
Hyde.
Yes.
Bellbertson.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is complicated, this is, um, they better see that it wasn't.
You buying drinks?
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's not over.
All right. I would, yeah, I would, there's a motion to postpone the reports until next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then we have public comment, so it's eleven. Oh, I guess we do. A second.
Yeah, full second.
Yeah, right, okay. Oh, Kim, more, and, and the Eagle, more Eagle.
By your order.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any votes? All right, public comment, I'm opening public comment and.
Eleven oh seven.
Eleven oh seven, is there anyone in the room that would like to, yes, Kathy?
I would like to speak with the petitioner.
Well, the petitioner can stay.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll keep it within the time. Okay, cause I know it's late for your folks. I don't have as many brain cells going right now. It's not appropriate to go to drink this and so. Kathleen Brand, Seattle resident. Thank you, folks, for the very good discussion. I just want to remind and make some observations. I just wanna remind the board, the commission, because I, I think there was only three commissioners that were, were here for the prior discussion on approval of this PUD. This developer had approved a PUD for office space. They came to the commission and asked for me a culpa, would you let me do something else? And you folks granted that, and you granted something that I totally disagreed with because their problem is not SiO's problem. And so I say this because there's a bit of, of a feeling of sort of a threat that I hear that, you know, my attorney says this, and you know, it sort of goes down the path of, give me what I want, or, you know, there might be some action in. There should be some consideration of what this commission already did for this developer. You gave them a lifeline. It wasn't our problem. We didn't, the township didn't give it, get anything for you giving that, them the lifeline, because they don't think they can sell office space where we have another development on the books at, what is it, AR Bauer that wants to put office space in at Zeeb and Liberty. So there's some conflict there, can you really sell office? Somebody thinks you can. And I think there should be some consideration that we did toss them that bone and got nothing for it. Another thing, I think it's really inappropriate for developers to interject when the commission is deliberating on a decision. They're trying to influence you to do what they want. They should, really shouldn't even say anything. You folks are in your decision-making. I think you've done a great job, I love everything that Jan said about, you know, we need to think of a way to monitor this, let's not get stuck with a bad situation, so. If you could try to manage, manage that, then you can deliberate on your own without being influenced. Uh, second, or third thing, a dog park over a filtration area? Does anybody think that's a good idea? Dogs urinate and defecate, and that's where the water is being filtered, so something to think about. Another thing, just, uh, let's think about this. A level one charger is nothing more than a one-ten outlet. I had a level one charger in my garage when I bought my hybrid vehicle. I didn't have to do anything. We don't get to call that a level one charger. We don't get to get credit for doing that. Every garage is gonna have an outlet in there for either vacuuming, or somebody wants to play music. So a developer that says, hey, we're putting level one in every garage, that is just disingenuous. They're gonna have it there anyway, so level two is something special, it's two-twenty, whether it's fifty amp, or you could go to sixty, so that's where you should really get the credit. Thank you for listening, um, I appreciate everything you did.
Thank you. Anyone else present? Please, anyone online? Jonathan Greifer? Over there, Jonathan?
Oh, hey, this is Jonathan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All righty, hold on one moment.
You're up.
Why don't you go ahead to somebody else while I figure out why I can't hear you, or hear anything?
We can hear you.
Hear you, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
All right.
What's that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I am so sorry for the problems. Uh, thanks, LPC, for what you did tonight. Uh, I think there was a lot of good discussion. I'm sorry.
Planning Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the planning commission. Do I, you can hear me, though, I can't.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. All right, uh, well, thank you for correcting me as well. I know this wasn't a simple activity, although I think the simple decision was, uh, that this wasn't that complicated. Um, the developers were asked to do specific tests and did not do them. End of sentence, send them away. Um, they were asked specifically for a, I'm sorry, you're not, you're shaking your head no, is there something you'd like to say? I'm speaking to you, the board, and if you, the board, or the committee are gonna shake your head no to me while I'm speaking, then perhaps I should stop and you can speak instead.
Please go ahead, Jonathan.
Well, speak to your committee members then, and tell them that if they're gonna shake their head no's to the things that I'm saying while I'm speaking, then they should probably either speak up and, and challenge me, or hold their opinions to themselves.
Fine, it is, it is you addressing the planning commission. This is your opportunity to address.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to do. They knew last October, and they didn't do anything but show up today and try to bully it through. They knew that their, the tests that were asked for weren't done, they've made it clear they didn't wanna do it. Now they're willing to toss the bus stop cash aside and toss it at some monitoring, maybe. And Discount Wilford Brimley should learn exactly what Kathleen was saying. She should learn that when the board is having internal discussions, he needs to be. And, uh, discount Wilford Brimley should learn exactly what Kathleen was saying. She learned that when the board is having internal discussions, he needs to be quiet. That was totally inappropriate for him to try to influence any of you with his comments about, well, everything that I've read says that this is an issue that doesn't need to be solved. We don't care what the developer who's trying to make money thinks. And I think you guys ultimately let us down by conditionally appro- or whatever the measly words you put together to jump through this Olympic-sized. Hoop, uh, to, uh, to try to, uh, make this happen. You were given a mission to see that these guys test the air to protect the residents. They haven't done it, yet you've moved ahead. Sad. I wish you guys would do better.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, good evening. Mark Smith, four-one-four-four, West Liberty. Thanks for, uh, taking my comments. I wanted to, uh. Comment on a couple of things. One, as the owner of my HQ, we have dealt with some. Uh, smells from the Cadillac asphalt plant and we did some extensive, uh, work. With our environmental consultant to try to monitor and. I, it has to occur on the, at the moment or day that the, uh, smells occur. We typically get an inversion. Um, layer two or three times a year and that's when we, you know. Encounter some smells from the Cadillac, the Cadillac asphalt plant. Because we run a lab building, we're essentially a hundred percent outside air, so we have, get a lot of flow through in our building. And that smell is kind of magnified. And of course, when you've got a bunch of scientists, you smell volatile organic compounds, you get a lot of people who are a little worked up. Uh, so we did go through the process of getting proposals for. For monitoring, I think those, those proposals for a single session were in the neighborhood of about twenty-five thousand dollars. And it was difficult for us to sort of time the event when we might or might not have. Uh, you know, a smell coming from the Cadillac asphalt plant. I will say that we have a direct line to Cadillac and they've been very responsive if and when we ever do have smells. They, uh, will make adjustments to their system. Uh, but again, it's typically on a, on a, uh, inversion type day. I did want to just touch base on the reason I appeared before the board, the commission earlier today was to talk, uh, on behalf of two forty-two. And I pulled up, uh, I'm sorry I didn't have it when I came there. I pulled up the, the deed restriction or the restrictive covenant. When I got home and I just want to read you quickly and I sent this to Laura, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, it talks about prohibited land use and I'll skip the first portion of it, but residential use of the property is also prohibited under any authority allowing such use. As illegal non-conforming use. The following uses are however allowed. Any use that intended to house, educate or provide care for children, the elderly, the infirm or other sensitive populations such as daycare centers. Educational facilities, hospitals, elder care facilities and nursing homes. That was the restrictive covenant, um, that we put through to the, the planning commission and board of trustees when. We were working with two forty-two. Um, to get our conditional use for their site on, on the Filter Farms, uh. Site condo under the Jackson Road overlay district. And I'm pretty sure if we go back in the record, we'll find that, uh, approval, uh, permitted for daycare and school. Uh, when it was originally approved. And I, I don't know why that, uh, we haven't found that record. But those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
You said it was, you believe it was approved for?
I, yeah, I believe that was, I, I can tell you for a fact that I spent tens of thousands of dollars making sure that we had the sampling done and the restrictive covenant. And, uh, back and forth with Doug, uh, Luon back in the day. When we were trying to, uh, when we were working through the approval process. One of the main reasons that we were supportive of, of two forty-two was because of the school and the daycare, uh, supporting the community that we were building there. We have a lot of young scientists that need access to daycare and having it onsite was, uh, very attractive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? No, all right, staying done?
I'm going to close public comment.
All right, uh, any second? Andrea? Commissioner Raffey? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we closed public comment at eleven nineteen. So.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? And, all right, we're adjourned at eleven nineteen.